Linda.
Linda, you okay?
Yeah.
Everybody gone?
Walter.
Walter, okay. Steve?
Steve's here.
Thanks, Steve. Sheila? Sheila, debuted. Harry, you okay?
I'm on. This is me.
Harry? Bobby?
I'm here.
Hey, thanks. Bobby? Harry? Mr. Hoss? Bobby Schnee?
Hello.
Bob, is that you?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob. Harry, you okay? Harry? Okay, it's 7:09. About to call a meeting to order. We get to pledge allegiance in a moment of silence before roll call. Sharon, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Hoss? Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermit?
Present.
Mr. McGinley's absent. Mr. Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
President.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. Hoss? Mr. Hoss? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Hoss? You might not be back yet.
Okay. Okay, Sharon, thanks.
Mr. President.
Thanks, Sharon. Additions to, deletions from the work session. Agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Motion to adopt the voting, the work session agenda?
Some move, Linda.
Second. That was Ms. Siedman. All in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposition? And the abstentions, motion carries. Works session agenda is adopted. Number one, agenda items under the county manager, receive and discuss monthly budget reports, February 2021. Mr. Swets, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet is the monthly budget reports. February, as you recall from our other meetings, had quite a lot going on. We are closing the year. We are voting on some ordinances to move money for 2020 and also starting our audit prep. So the detailed reports, the detailed accounts payable, our bank balances, I will say some of those bank balances were inflated because of the fact that we had some outstanding checks. You'll see in March that some of the projects, particularly the CARES funding, the checks were cashed later in the year. Everything had to be done by 12:30 for that. And for audit purposes, we did most of those disbursements via check. So you have the reports. If you have any specific questions that I can answer tonight, I'll be doing that for sure. If not, I'll take an email like any other time and get back to council.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, actually.
Sure. Mr. Hoss, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry I got here a minute late. Mr. Swets, Manager Pedri talked about the 114 million CARES windfall that the county will be experiencing. What are we doing about that for as far as timeline goes? About how to make decisions on using that funding source?
Brian, I can take an award.
Oh, hey, Dave. I didn't see you there. I'm sorry.
I'm here. Yeah, Mr. Hoss, we're waiting on the final federal guidelines. So as soon as we get the final federal guidelines, actually, we haven't gotten an official notice yet that we are definitely getting it. We received word numerous times from Representative Cartwright's office, Representative Muser's office, and Senator Casey's office that we've received it and we will be, that we will start the process. But we don't have the funding yet. I only go, I'm passing along whatever information I have on it. The county council, you've seen that it said it can't go for tax deductions and it can't go for pension things. And I'm waiting on the rest of the federal guidelines. So once we get the federal guidelines in place and we get the money, I'll come to county council with a list of ideas and you guys pick them. What do you want to get done? I do know that it will be, looks like it has to be spent. And if you remember the last CARES funding, we had to get it all spent by December 30th. Yeah, so we really only had three months to get it done. This looks like a longer period. It'll be until 2023. And our last CARES money, we shared a lot with the municipalities, the school districts. They're getting their own allocation from the stimulus packet. So this will be solely for county projects. And we'll go from there. But once I get all the information from the feds, I'm going to come to get to you with a list of recommendations. And you guys make a decision with what you want to do with it. It's a good problem to have to make a decision to where we're going to go with it. But you know what? Once again, this is a, those two major grants out we have going on right now on the county website, $3.5 million for bars, restaurants, and hotels. And the other ones are for landlords and tenants. So go to the county website for those two.
Very good. Now, thanks for the summary.
Mr. County Manager, question. The, all this CARES money, it comes with some stipulations, I guess. Do you have any of that stipulations yet?
No. That's the, that's the issue. If you recall, the last one, it had to be used for, to plan for, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus. And that was the issue. It had to all be done by December 30th. So we know we had a lot of municipalities that were really struggling to meet those guidelines. But you know, we were able to get it across the line and we gave out over $10 million to our small businesses and those types of things. I'm still waiting on the guidelines for this one. Andy Riley and his team is looking at this. Whenever we get those guidelines, we're going to pass along. The only things we know for sure is that it can't reduce taxes and it can't be used for pension payments. And I'm waiting on everything else.
And I'm sure there'll be a deadline to it, correct? Or you don't know that, obviously?
According to what I'm reading, it looks like December of 2023.
Oh, that's a good thing.
So that's a good, so that's a good thing for us. I mean, off the top of my head, you know, we major infrastructure projects, you know, paying down the debt. These are, and obviously assisting our small businesses. These are all things that are just off the top of my head. We'll sit down with county council and say, here's our plan, here's recommendations. Obviously, we'll take your recommendations into play as well. And it'll be budgeted and processed per your suggestions. But let us get the money first and let us get the guidelines.
Well, that'll be a great, a great thing when that happens, that's for sure, you know?
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Perry. On the, on the financial report, the outstanding invoices, or you know, that were outstanding on February 28th, I guess. You know, and it's interesting that Mr. Pedri just mentioned helping small businesses. The first two or three of the outstanding invoices had due dates on them of March 15th. And then in the line, in the column where it says when the check was actually cut, it was March 19th, which was four days after the due date. And you know, we know that the mail has some issues. So I'm sure these are our local businesses, local vendors that really, you know, they've been waiting, like in the first case, I think there's $8,000 there that was outstanding. That's a lot to one of our small businesses. I just, I'm wondering, you know, what the policy is or the, you know, how we go about paying those invoices? Because it seems like if the invoice was issued at the beginning of February with the due date six weeks later, it's really irresponsible of us not to meet that.
I'll answer that, Ms. Howe. So as you're well aware, council added a position, I believe it was two years ago. So there's two union positions and one non-repositioning accounts payable. One of the things that we talked about was lessons learned from administering a grant. The 114 million will be different than the 28 million. One of the things that was dropped on the county to pay for the 28 million was all the 199s in accounting as well as getting the municipality support for all of these grants. So I understand the concern and do agree that six weeks is a long period of time. We are working, we do have the staff to get that done. I have talked to the team. However, just like I've said at our meetings, quite a bit's come up. And anytime anyone has called or had a question, we were willing to have them either come and pick up the check or send an ACH if they said, hey, check was mailed on said date and it's two weeks later. So it is duly noted. We are working on it. And there is a remedy if somebody still didn't receive the check.
Thanks, Linda, for picking that up.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Hello, Steve.
It's, Mr. Griffith, I have a question for Mr. Swets. It may be a general, it may be a general answer, but I'm looking at the revenue side of our budget performance report. And I see a lot of other, other grant. I see one other income under the Treasury's department. It's at 89%. I see 4176 general government rent of land at 109%. I mean, some of these items are well over the top as far as revenue comes in. And it's only February. This report ends on February 28th. And I was just wondering if we, is this all related to the grant money and COVID money that we're receiving? Is that why these items are so high in, like the one for the, for correctional services under other income is a 245% over budget? Which means, you know, he's considered, he's collected about $13,000 in that, in that line item. So, and $5,000 is his budgeted item. So I'm just curious, is the, is all of these items that are over budget due to COVID? Or are we really doing well on collecting revenues?
A little bit of both, Mr. Griffith. So I noticed after the reports were sent out, that report says 1120, not 1121. So part of that is it's picking up more than a few month period. It's picking up the prior year. We're working on some audit reports. So that was found after the report was sent out. So some of that is last year's money. And the second thing you are correct on is there are times when we get extra grant money primarily due to the CARES that you won't see. So when you see March's report, I could even run another report and send it to council. It just came to my attention before this meeting, we're working on ordinances and some other things, that that date said 1120. I did review and missed that when I sent it out. So that's part of the reason. It's a more than, more than a two-month period and there is some additional revenue. So when we do the reports, go ahead.
Yeah, that would, that would explain, and to my error, I did not notice that that date would range was 1120 to 221 of 20, or 228 to 21. So thanks for picking that up for me and helping me understand that. Because otherwise, I was thinking, hey, man, we're going to be having a bang-up year this year. If we're in February and we're well over budget. So you just, you just pushed me back down. So thanks so much.
Wasn't trying to do that, Mr. Griffith, but just trying to give all of council correct information. So like I said, it just came to my attention when I was reviewing it again right before this meeting. I did send it out and missed it as well, so.
All right, very good. Thanks so much for the invite.
Mr. Chairman, one, Mr. Hoss, let me say one thing. I wanted to thank Linda for pointing out about those invoices because things like that, you know, just skip by and don't recognize it. And thanks to Mr. Swets for having a very good answer to it. I'm glad you went to Plan B. If you couldn't get them out in time, you have some options there. So that some vendors, our local vendors can get, can get it. So we understand that you are working at the max and I appreciate that very much, Brian. Go ahead, Mr. Hoss.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, a question for Mr. Swets. The only thing that I really saw when I looked over this was our checking accounts and the council members have the, in front of them, it's page 62. We're looking at line item 100, the HAVA account, the Help American Vote Act, that went way back to like 2004, 2005. We still have 255,000 in that. And I thought we expended that. I thought we used that to pay off some of that debt. Can you tell us, again, just give us a recap on that figure?
Yeah, I, I was on, I think we did use some of that. So being that I did not look at it, at that particular line, instead of giving you incorrect information, I'd rather come back and, even if it's an email tomorrow, I do think that number's correct, but I do remember us having a discussion that we were using some of that money. So let me confirm either A or B so council is clear. Again, I did say some of that money, and not for that one, was due to the fact of the mail and the timing of the bills. But that was talked about, the HAVA grant was talked about earlier. So let me go back and confirm and give council an email on that one, Mr. Hoss.
Yeah, no, thanks. I mean, and just to wrap though, I appreciate that. And that really should be zeroed out because we deemed it wasn't acceptable use and it was the will of this council to expend those funds because they're just sitting there and, you know, we could certainly use a lot more. So thanks, thanks for checking on that.
Anything else from council? Okay, let's go down to number two, a discussion regarding the resolution adopting the 2021 Lackawanna, Luzerne County's comprehensive plan. Mr. Jones, are you on? Matt?
Hi, Chairman Perry. How are you?
Good, good. Thanks for joining us, Matt. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Matt Jones with the Planning and Zoning Department. And tonight, we are presenting to you the Lackawanna-Luzerne Counties Comprehensive Plan Draft for 2021. This project was drafted over the past year in conjunction with a 20-year transportation plan for the two counties. The transportation plan was just adopted on February 3rd by the Bye County Transportation Planning Authority, which Mr. Pedri happens to chair. And this is the sister component to that project. We pursued both projects in a tag team with Lackawanna County for purposes of building efficiencies of scale and saving money and doing this efficiently. We were able to pool our resources through your generous provision of general county funds and funds that came from Lackawanna County and other grant monies that we were able to secure to pursue this project. And we secured state grant funding to help defray the costs of this project. The monies that we secured were able to, we were able to put towards the payment of a professional consultant. I have three of those team members from the consulting group with me here tonight from Michael Baker International. Brian, Mr. Brian Funkhauser was the team leader for the transportation planning project, the Long Range Transportation Plan. And I also have Hannah Clark and Chris Rabasco, who have been helping us draft and put together this comprehensive plan. And so we kind of had scrambled to get this ready for you in the midst of several other projects. You'll remember, we just passed and adopted a hazard mitigation plan and we just adopted a rewriting of our county zoning ordinance. And so in the midst of all of that excitement, we wanted to get this to council, the council clerk by January. It had to undergo a careful review by the Office of Law. And so we received notification that it cleared legal sufficiency recently. And so some of this material, we have to kind of work through. It was presented to you in Janu-, well, it was prepared for you in January and now you're just seeing it now. So I'm already seeing one or two things that I'll recommend we edit in the process. But generally, we have, we wanted to float this to you for your work session so that you can wade through the item. We, we happen to have a slideshow ready that we could present to you. If you would indulge us in that regard, I could present that with the consultant. I don't know if that's legally acceptable or if that's per process. We didn't have it ready for you in January when we sent this to Sharon Lawrence. But we do have just maybe five or six slides ready for tonight. If you wanted to see them and if council agreed that that was appropriate, we don't have to go through those slides. I'm ready to talk about the item and present it to you either way. But I just wanted to make you aware that that's something we have ready for tonight if you would like to see it. I think it would be helpful, but that will be up to you.
Hold on a second, Matt. This is Chris Perry speaking. I don't see any reason why I wouldn't want to see it. Or, Linda, that's okay with you?
The last time I checked, slide shows were not illegal in the state of Pennsylvania.
I'd like to see it, Linda.
Matt?
Okay, I promise you, there's nothing untoward in the content of this slideshow.
We trust you. Trust me.
I emailed it earlier today.
Mr. Jones, I read your whole report, so it's not 138 slides, is it?
No, 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 no.
Because it was very impressive. It really was.
Okay. I emailed that slide to Jared Katauski earlier today. Jared, if you happen to have that in your email, if you could start loading that up to share it with the group, that'd be fantastic. And I can sort of talk through the, the intermission, if you would, just to kind of lay out an outline of this and some key points. And then I would ask Hannah with the consultant group to follow up on my comments and help walk us through the slide. And her and I can tag team presentation of the slideshow with her and her other colleagues. Let me just say that this, the idea of having a comprehensive plan is kind of intimidating. It sounds rather impressive and something of a big deal. And it is. But I will say that when it comes to the hard and fast regulation of land uses within the 21 communities that we provide coverage for, those communities that don't have their own zoning ordinance, really, the county zoning ordinance is where the rubber meets the road for regulation of land use in those communities. And so this comprehensive plan, we have a version of this already adopted by the county legislature back in 2011. And that plan has been serving us for the time being. And state law requires that we update our comprehensive plan every 10 years. And so we're due for an update. And we've been working on this for the past several months. We, we did quite an extensive bit of public outreach to key groups and the public at large to collect public input. And we, we had many volunteers agree to serve on focus groups. And Hannah will present a little bit more detail about that in a moment. But let me just say that the comprehensive plan provides a broad brush guideline for future land use planning within the county and with, within all of the 76 communities, municipalities in the county. They can then enact their own municipal level comprehensive plan that would then need to at least mirror in some regard the county plan. And then the county zoning ordinance, any future amendments to the county zoning ordinance? You'll remember just on March 9th, you all adopted a rewrite to the county zoning ordinance. Any subsequent amendments in the future would then be guided by this plan. Staff would be keen to make sure that any proposed amendments proposed to council would then be in line with this document before you ever, it ever saw the light of day, before it ever came before you as the legislative body. We held, this was a challenge, the past year, we had COVID. And so because of coronavirus, we held many of these meetings remotely by webinar to gather public input on the document. The plan will feature a, what's called a future land use map, which gives a broad brush outline of where we anticipate future growth and development, infill development. That's, that's development where development had already occurred, but we're reinvesting in our town centers and urban communities. That's, that's going to be the map that shows generally where we anticipate that growth to occur and where we're encouraging that growth to mostly occur. The future land use map, which we'll show you in a moment, will show where those areas of growth are aimed to be focused. But I also want to say that, that doesn't mean, there's no, there's no impetus with that map that growth would then be prevented in other portions of the county, out in the countryside, in our more rural bucolic areas. There is a theme in the plan that we're proposing that we would be looking to conserve our agricultural and natural resources. But growth may still occur. And the zoning ordinance is really the key document that guides any restriction or regulation of growth throughout the county and in particular, the 21 communities that we serve. So one of the other themes that we're going to talk about is this concept of achievable housing. And this is something we wanted to present to you as an idea that came out of our focus groups. It was thought of as desirable on the part of our counterparts in Lackawanna County as well. There seems to be emerging this based on, you know, research we've received from the institute. And, you know, just looking around, it seems apparent to us that there is a growing market for achievable housing. Or that's kind of a different term for affordable housing. That's housing that would be for residents that happen to be lower income workforce residents. Folks that are working in our communities that are looking for an option that's more affordable, where they can live and raise their families and work in our community. I am, I am recommending that we see the slideshow today and think about the themes in this document. I would recommend you all talk about it and ask us any questions you might have. This did go before the volunteer members of the Luzerne County Planning Commission. They held two public meetings to discuss the item and they voted unanimously to open a 45-day public comment period, which recently passed. We had shared this plan with all of the school districts and municipalities in and contiguous to Luzerne County so that they were aware of us working on this plan. And the plan has been posted on the department webpage since January 15th. On January 14th, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward this item, to open the 45-day public comment period and forward this item to council for your adoption consideration. One of the topics, so you have been presented with the version that was drafted on January 14th that the planning commission saw. One item of commentary that came out of the planning commission is that the members wanted you all to consider the concept that Nescapec Borough and the East Berwick area of Salem Township be considered something of having more of an opportunity for growth in the future with the caveat that that area suffers from flooding when we have storm events. And so in that regard, there are limitations to the growth in that area. But they wanted to call out that down county portion of our community as an area that's, that's perhaps ready for more growth in the future, ready to see more growth potential. Let's see here. We have, we have the consultant on contract through April. We had been working over the past several weeks to get this ready for you. I am recommending that you all talk through this item today. Ask us if you have any questions. And I would encourage you all to consider adopting this plan by, by resolution vote as early as your next meeting on April 13th, if you would indulge us in that regard. If you decide it might take an additional meeting to wade through this item, that's your prerogative. But as a resolution, we would only have to meet on this item twice at the council level if you decided to fast track this and. if you decided to fast track this and adopt the plan quickly. I should say that.
Hey, Matt. Matt, let's get to the plan.
Okay. Let me just also say that the Lackawanna Commissioners also have to adopt this if it were to be adopted, and they are going through that process simultaneously with us. And so I'm going to ask the, uh, um, also, I need to point out one last thing, David, is that the resolution that's been prepared, it has an adoption date of March 23rd. That obviously would need to be amended to list the adoption date as April 13th or whatever subsequent date council decides to act on this plan. We, we anticipated an earlier schedule, but it, it, it turns out that we're meeting today for the first time. April 13th might be the adoption date if we get there. Um, so with that, I'll introduce Hannah Clark. Hannah is available, uh, by telephone and, uh, it looks like Jared was able to put up this, uh, slideshow for us. Thank you, Jared. And so Hannah, if you want to just touch through the, uh, future land use map, that would be very helpful. And then I think if council has any questions for the timeline of how this was produced, who the players were, um, what meetings we held, I know that you're prepared to speak to that as well. And with that, I will hand it off to Hannah. And then if Chairman Perry or any of the council members have questions, we intend this to be an interactive event. And so, uh, it's, it's within your bandwidth to just stop us at any time and ask us any questions you might have. Uh, but with that, Hannah, why don't you, uh, take it away and, uh, move us into the, the land use map?
Great. Well, um, thank you so much, Matt, for, for that context. And thank you to County Council and the chairman for having us, um, from Michael Baker here this evening. My name is Hannah Clark. I'm a senior planner with Michael Baker. And Jared, I'll just, if you don't mind, um, advancing the slides for me, I'd much appreciate it. So you've already heard about this. What is comprehensive planning? What does it mean? Matt provided a very good, um, overview of why this is important. So if we move on to the next slide, um, we did want to share just this. Again, uh, we can come back to this. What was the planning process that started about a year ago? Almost exactly right with the onset of what we know is the COVID pandemic. So it did create a unique situation for engagement. And Jared, if you don't mind going to the next slide, we can still say that we reached many, many folks um, across the county and across the two counties through an online survey, through focus groups, through community, a community forum and through steering committee meetings. So what you will see when we show you the future land use map and the regional priorities really do reflect an ongoing and consistent community process that we, um, are excited to discuss this evening. So Jared, if you don't mind going to the next slide, um, and then advance it one more, thank you so much. Uh, so in this is the map of our current land use in the region. And this is what we have evaluated as the main type of land use across the two counties. And so this is where we're starting, this is the existing condition. And then when you go to the next slide with future land use, you're starting to see how do we really see, um, where we are today to where we want to go. And as Matt said, a big part of this is prioritizing growth where growth is already happening and what we call these primary growth areas where infrastructure exists, where infill and redevelopment may be possible. And really corresponding with major employment centers across the region and major transportation corridors. We then look at what we call secondary growth areas that are really focused around where are we seeing that burgeoning growth? We know our region, this region is changing in terms of the economy and where there is job growth and where there's business development. So the secondary growth areas often correspond to or are close by some of the industrial parts and some of the transportation and logistics industries that we know will influence the future business development and land use in the area.
Let me just interrupt real quickly, if I can, and point out while we're looking at this map, that you can see clearly the classic valley development. You see the cities of Wilkes-Barre and, uh, you see Pittston and Nanacoque, some of the new warehousing that's moving into, uh, the Nanacoque and Hanover Township area. Um, and we, we're seeing that Dallas is, um, emerging as a, a significant growth area. Uh, Back Mountain, um, Hazleton is on the map. And we're, there's quite a bit of new, um, industrial development, uh, northwest of Hazleton, uh, for Can Do and, uh, that area, uh, down that way. Um, you'll see that Shikshini is represented on the map. And, uh, the one thing that we haven't yet added that we would add if we have your, um, uh, approval is that, uh, Nescapec Burwick would also emerge as, uh, a small dot on the map showing it having some growth potential in the future. Um, it, provided it can work around some of the flood prone issues that that area has. Um, I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you, Hannah.
No, thank you for that additional context. And so, yes, as we're talking through, this is, this is really as, as I think Matt has shared and as is really expressed in the plan, this is aspirational. This is a framework for where we could go and where things like your recently adopted zoning ordinance can help us get there. So I'm just going to take us to the last slide because I really look forward to the discussion and answering any and all questions. That again, when we talk about this regional plan as being aspirational and really setting a tone for how we want to move forward with growth, development, and some degree of change in the region, is that we have these policies that are foundational to giving us the priorities, to helping us understand where we want to implement certain actions. Also, the timeline of implementation, what will be near term, what will be midterm, what will happen within the next 10 years? And so as Matt mentioned, we talked about the housing market and the importance of achievable housing, which is really that workforce affordable housing throughout the region. And then talking about growth and containing growth first to these primary growth areas and then looking to the secondary growth areas. Supporting the agricultural natural spaces is of prime importance as well as thinking about renewable energy resources. And my colleague Brian Funkhauser is on the call as well to speak to some of these more transportation-based priorities that have been both echoed in this comprehensive plan and also laid out very clearly in the long-range transportation plan, which as Matt said, was, uh, adopted on February 3rd by the regional NPO. And then finally, thinking about our cultural historic resources and the importance of preserving and continuing to sustain those as the region changes and grows. So that's what we wanted to share with you today. We really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all. We appreciate your time. And myself, Brian, and my colleague Christopher Basto, who was, um, facilitating much of the community engagement aspects, are all here to answer your questions. So we thank Matt for the invitation and we thank you all for the, your time this evening.
So with that, I would ask council if they have any questions. Uh, Mr. Perry, if you want to, uh, ask the group if, if they have any questions or concerns or commentary, um, we're here to answer if, uh, the manager will allow, and we're at your disposal.
Hey, Matt, I have, I have a quick question for you. First of all, congratulations. I also did read this entire plan, extensive work. And, uh, you guys are doing tremendous, uh, uh, work the last years, uh, in, in Luzerne County. And, I mean, the extensive plans that you just put together, the zoning, the hazard mitigation and, and this one, I mean, it's, it's, it's truly remarkable. It's, it's really well written. The question I have for you, some constituent that we had, uh, he had asked us earlier, um, was Hazleton afforded to look at this and Hazleton area school district? Would you know offhand? I mean.
Yes.
To get the opportunity?
Uh, yes, we shared this document with both of those groups on the 15th of January.
Okay, thank you. Is there, Mr. Hawes, did you, uh, pick up any other questions that, that he had? I just couldn't write them down fast enough.
Yeah. Well, um, I, I, I echo your sentiments too, Mr. Chairman. I mean, planning committee did a great job, Luzerne County staff and all the other committees that played a part. I see Ted Wamples on the call. Good job, Ted. I know you played a role in this too. And so all the stakeholders, really, really comprehensive and really impressive. Uh, I'm looking at this, and you know, I really liked too, Mr. Jones, is that you set out your, your policy goals, but you followed up with implementations. It was very well organized. And well, that's probably a credit to the consultants here that we have online too, very, very easy to read. Um, that being said, I looked at, and you know, Mr. Raybo's being on, on the, on the blight too. That, um, Lackawanna County on page 17, they had their, their blight strategy back in 2018. And, um, I'm just wondering why, it's, why we can't move in that direction here in Luzerne County, if we can't marshal some stakeholders together and, and really put a more comprehensive plan. We've got the Blight Property Review Committee here, but that's just such a, a very tiny, tiny fragment of what really needs a, uh, to be a, a bigger strategy. And I, I look at that because your, your top three policies talk about striving to meet the demand for housing, um, containing growth in lands with where the primary growth areas are, and then retaining the region's natural areas. I just see combating blight and turning that into productive use. This seems like a no-brainer. I think if you do that, we've got these brownfields, we've got this land, this, it's a resource, really. We just need to unlock American ingenuity and unlock people to really see as that is an investment and not as just a liability that, uh, we talked about, there's not affordable housing. How about we help people have a stake in their own home and refurbish these homes? But I think it hinges on a more comprehensive blight strategy and other counties have done it across Pennsylvania. We haven't had that. So I, I would like to see that before we vote on this final draft. Perhaps the committee of the stakeholders could get together and make that a bigger presence here in Luzerne County. And I'll stop you for my second one, if you want to take that or if anybody would like to chime in on that one.
Well, well, councilman, I can quickly say that if it's the wishes of council, we could certainly, um, you know, if you were to propose adoption of this plan by resolution, it can be made contingent on the various, um, edit suggestions that we've received at the 11th hour from you and the planning commission, uh, such as calling out Nescapec and Burwick as a potential growth area and, uh, and calling out blight as, uh, an item that the county wants to focus on tackling um, in a more robust way in the coming years. Um, and, and we could call out that theme if you think that that's important and if your colleagues all agree.
Sure. Yeah, make no mistake, I do not want an 11th hour of you. That is terrible. And I, I wouldn't expect that because I know a lot of work has gone into this. So I, I don't want to do that. But, um, I think it could play a big role and I just, I just really didn't really see it mentioned too much throughout the entirety of the document. And you know what's really neat about Nescapec? If you go down in the borough, when, when you leave the borough, like you're, you're in the country. It's like, it's like an old fashioned town. Nescafe's a great place. And if, if I lived there, I wouldn't want people to know about it because it's such a great place. And East, you know, Salem Township is, is very similar. East Burwick there, you're, you're in, you're in the country in no time. So I think, you know, your strategy is also here. I, I really sign on to this too. I don't want to see the countryside developed and have it look like, like anywhere else that we see across our country. I would love to see it preserved and have country people maintain that lifestyle. And I think country people feel that same way. At least the people I talk to truly want that. So, um, but, you know, they have leaders in that neck of the woods. I'm getting off track here. I'm sorry. Apologize. Um, the, the second one, however, we've got this stormwater fee that has been really cost prohibitive here, cost prohibitive here in, in Luzerne County, in the Wyoming Valley communities and the Drange Basin. And, um, I want to know what, what is the strategy? Can we somehow pop that into the comprehensive plan as well? Because, um, it's, it's, it's a detraction. It's, it's really hurting development. And when people leave these areas, they say, look, I don't have to pay the levy fee authority. I don't have to pay the levy fee anymore. I don't, I have my own septic. I don't have to play valley sanitary authority. I don't got to pay the rain tax because I live in points south. So what can we do to take that burden off the people? I think that would, would do very well. You heard Mr. Mantzahn, you know, he's, um, Mr. Rain, Mr. Anti-Rain Tax, of course. But what can we do to help put people's concerns about that at ease as well? Because, um, you know, people, people see that coming to a borough or a township near them and they don't like it. And we look at, um, you know, our, our region now, Lackawanna County doesn't have this yet, but I know people there also, they're very skeptical. So, um, I'm errant on here. I don't know if, if we could see that too. Again, not at the 11th hour, but just a suggestion.
Anybody else from council? Any questions for, for Matt and his team?
Mr. Perry, this is Dave Pedry. I just want to say, I mean, before council is finalized, obviously, uh, you know, I'm the only one that likes to listen to himself talk, uh, that I'm allowed in administration. So I apologize. But I just want to say that how lucky we are to have someone like Matt Jones and his team working on these things. You've seen in the past year, just in his time here, that he's, he's found his footing. And we are putting all these things in front of you. Um, we are going to have a professional, uh, location here. You know, really since we lost Adrian Maroli back in 2012. And Matt's been doing a phenomenal job for us. We're lucky to have him and his team. I want everybody to know that. So thank you for your work, guys.
Thanks, uh, Dave. Thanks for your comments and I echo all of them. I mean, they're, they're, they're great. We're just lucky to have them.
Okay.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Uh, I have a quick question. I think Mark Raybo touched on during his public comment that you may not have been able to write down was, was the ability for them to publicly advertise the meetings? And did we get public, uh, did we advertise it publicly and have anybody come to voice opposition at all on this, uh, comprehensive plan yet? Has that been done?
Uh, the, the, the plan has been posted on our website since January 15th. Uh, we, the several months prior to that, we did extensive outreach. I think Hannah and Brian and Chris Chapman is here, um, have some more familiarity with the extensive, you know, how much we, we did reach out to the public on both this and the transportation planning, uh, plan that we've been working on over the past two years. Um, uh, I do know that if, if council decides to advance this item to April 13th for a prospective vote to adopt the plan, um, we will then have to put an advertisement in the newspaper for that April 13th meeting. Um, we did notify directly every municipality in Luzerne County that this plan had been drafted on the 15th of last, uh, of January. Um, we notified all of the school districts. And, uh, a lot of the key stakeholder groups had been solicited in the development of the plan over the past several months. Um, the plan has been posted on our website since January. And, uh, I do know that our planning commission meetings, um, notification of them were posted in advance um, on our website. And I can't remember if they, they went in the newspapers as well, but notification was put on our website, uh, in advance that the planning commission would be meeting. Um, and so, you know, we, we had quite a bit of public outreach and notification, if, if I'm not mistaken.
So there was, so, so to be clear, there was, there was no public hearing on it as of yet?
That is correct. Um, the only.
And has all the, and has all the other municipalities received a copy of the plan? They have.
They, they received a web link to the plan on the 15th of January. And I will say that state law requires us to hold one public hearing. And it would be the public hearing where council would propose to hold a vote to potentially adopt the plan. So that would possibly be April 13th. We would have to put two newspaper postings, um, in advance of that meeting if it were slated to occur. And, uh, that would appear in the newspapers, uh, as an official public hearing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Hey, Matt, thank you. And, and, you know, I could see that the next couple of weeks you'll be going through like double teaming, doing it again. So getting it out there to municipalities, the school districts for one last time for them to look at it. Uh, I wish they would because it's a, it's a good, it's a good information, really good information for our county. Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Hey, so, so, Mr. Jones, so just a clarifying question for process. So if council were to, to move this forward, we could say, yes, we support the plan contingent upon addressing blight issues and stormwater mitigation? Is that what you suggest?
If, if your colleagues agree with those sentiments, uh, yes, it would be then put to you for April 13th for a vote.
So then, so we, we voiced these, 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 again, I'm, I'm just one person, but these are the two I keep on hearing about. So we address these two concerns and then at a later time, there will be an amendment to the plan or that will be done in advance? Cause I know it's, your, your timeline says kind of, time is kind of the essence at this point.
Harry.
It's an excellent question. It's an excellent question and I will answer it in two ways. The first is the official resolution that's been drafted that you would be signing after the vote to adopt. I will be amending that and sending that to Sharon, the clerk, just to show that the anticipated adoption date of March twenty third is not the date we would use. It would be April thirteenth conceivably or a later date if this got pushed back further. We do have the consultant on board through April. We're keen to try to get this done. Things end up taking on a life of their own and take longer than we'd like. I literally just published the zoning ordinance that you adopted on the ninth. I published that literally before I came on to this video call because it goes into effect legally tomorrow, basically after midnight tonight. And so I wanted to get that on the website, distribute that. Anyways, the resolution will be amended, assuming you all are amenable to that idea. And I'll be sending that along to Sharon with the correct anticipated adoption date. And with regards to the the plan itself, the plan exists currently in two ways. The January fourteenth version that you all had sent to you that has been available publicly. And then there are the few comments we received from the planning commission. I have already asked the consultant to tweak the plan, a draft of the plan with those ideas incorporated into it on the assumption, and I don't want to be too presumptuous, that you all will agree to those changes. And any other changes that you may have discussed today or on the thirteenth of April that you all decide to vote upon and adopt as a group, as council. We can further edit the document based on that input and the consultant would help us expedite that. And what's a little bit tricky about this is that we would also be incorporating any possible edits that Lackawanna County Commissioners would wish to see in the document. This is a two county document. And so, you know, hopefully, the the vision of our leadership is our leadership will be from both counties will result in a document that is compatible and adopted by both parties without any kind of outlandish curveballs. So that's that's what we're operating under. You have basically it's January fourteenth version that you all had sent to you by email and by link unless you and the county commissioners of Lackawanna endorse any further edits like we've discussed today and they might discuss it their public hearing.
Okay, yeah. Well, if you can consider those two edits, I'd appreciate it on behalf of the folks that that speak out. So thanks. Thanks for the help. Thanks for the wonderful work.
Mr. Chairman, it's Walter.
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Jones, I'm I'm just following up on this question about the forty five days. It's in section three oh two. It says, once you give the plan, municipalities have forty five days to respond. So we couldn't actually act on this on April the thirteenth, correct?
You could act on it. We opened up the public comment period on January fifteenth. And because the planning commission voted on the fourteenth of January to allow us to do that. So it opened on the fifteenth of January and it concluded, I believe, on February twenty eighth of this year. And now you all may hear from your constituents that they want to hear about, you know, blight being addressed in some manner. And you may bring those items to the thirteenth of April meeting as council persons. And so we are here to tweak the document however might be deemed appropriate by you, the legislative body, before it's adopted, if that were to become desirable by vote. And so and so in a sense, you all continue to receive public input on this document. And of course, the April thirteenth meeting presumably would be a public hearing where any folks from the public at large could provide verbal comment or email us in advance before that vote were to occur. But the 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 comment period was open officially for that forty five day period required by state law. And we asked folks to send all comments to Hannah. And Hannah, I believe you did not receive any comments during that window. Okay. So the only input we've received since then was the planning commission input about Neskapek, Berwick growth potential vis a vis some of the flooding concerns that that area sees and what Mr. Haas has mentioned here tonight.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. All right, Matt and Hannah, thank you very much for a great report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Down to number three. Discussion regarding your resolution authorizing the county manager to extend the lease agreement between Luzerne County and U.S. Representative Matt Cartwright in the Penn Place Building. Attorney Crocomal, do you want to address that?
Thank you. The this is an extension of a lease that we, an existing lease that we have with Representative Matthew Cartwright. He won reelection and wants to extend the lease at Penn Place. Attached to the agenda submittal is the proposed lease and the existing lease.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Attorney Crocomal. Let's go down to number four. Discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Market Square Properties Development LLC for premises located at thirty three Wilkes-Barre Boulevard, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, one eight seven oh two. Before we open discussion up, I would like to call on Mr. Ted Wampole, our Executive Director of Luzerne County Visitors Bureau for some comments on him. Ted, you on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick comments. Obviously, you received copies of the lease agreement and the agenda submittal. One correction on the agenda submittal where it mentions the financing and it talks about the cost per square foot, the two dollar cost per square foot. It should be for maintenance in real estate, obviously not utilities in real estate. So one quick correction, the the leases is accurate. It's just I that that mistake was on my one. We put that together. But getting back to so, you know, this is something obviously that has been in the works for years. My understanding, it goes back, obviously predates me since I've only been here two years. And, you know, this has been a target for the Visitors Bureau, going back to as as long as two thousand and thirteen, if not even before that. And now with the construction, reconstruction, the renovation getting ready to start, we're excited that potentially we could move into this location. We, you know, worked on a lease agreement that, you know, will give us the space we need. You know, right now we're sitting at about thirteen hundred square feet of of space and and this will allow us twenty one hundred, which will allow us to vastly enlarge the visitor's center area, make it a truly a visitor's center where we could actually put exhibits regarding the heritage and history of the area together as well. It will have the ease of access that we don't really have right now with the current location. It will have the higher visibility because even though we're on the square, we're set back and a lot of people don't even know we are there. It will allow us for the storage that we don't currently have. It will give us provide greater security that we don't have right now in our current location. And and listen, it's going to help. We're renovating a historical structure, you know, preserving a historical structure, putting us in an area that, you know, goes back to the history of of what Luzerne County is all about. And, you know, I we're excited about doing this and we think we've got a pretty good deal here. And we're asking for council to approve the county manager entering that agreement. Excuse me.
Thanks, Ted. One more comment from Mr. Bob Borick. He's the chairman, the board chair of Luzerne County Convention Center and Visitor Bureau. Bob, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just to go along with what Ted said, we're taking a property that's been blighted for many, many years. That really is a focal point of Luzerne County in terms of the county seat being the Wilkes-Barre area and the ease of getting to it through Cole Street for visitors who come into town, bus traffic and all that kind of thing is going to make life a lot easier. We're trying to create an environment where people who come into the market for dropping their kids off at college, coming to concerts at the Kirby Center or the arena and all the areas around there that they can come to the Visitors Bureau, get information of all the positive things we have to offer, the basketball and hockey and baseball, the concerts and so on and so forth, hand out maps, have people have the opportunity to stop and and use the facilities to go to the the men's and women's rooms and all those kinds of stuff is going to make life a lot easier. And as you all know, we are adding about four to five or six new hotels and motels downtown Wilkes-Barre and other environments. And these people, we want them to stay two days, not just pass through on eighty one and leave. We want them to see Ricketts Glen. We want them to see a concert at the arena. So we need to fill those beds and we survive strictly off the hotel tax. We are not funded by taxes to the community. So it's imperative that the more money that we raise by putting people in hotels, the better it is for the county and the better it is for the Visitors Bureau to promote the county. So I'm awfully excited about the opportunity to be there. Mr. Albert has done an amazing job acquiring the property and renovating what's going to be a showplace. Ted and his crew have done an amazing job at the Visitors Bureau during the pandemic. As most of you may or may not know, in the early part of the pandemic, there were less than thirty percent occupancy in our hotels. And by the end of the summer, we were up to fifties fifty eight or so percent in spite of all the negatives because of mostly because of our location. And we want those people to come up so we can get up to the eighty percent with all the hotel rooms, which is going to generate a lot of funds for the county and to show them our hospitality and to renovate a beautiful old structure that is long overdue. So whatever we can provide you to let you know that this is where we need to be. Parking is immense. There's parking like crazy. And like Ted said, there really isn't any way to find the Visitors Bureau as of now. There's no parking up front other than paid parking meter parking. And it's really worked against us. So this is really a good opportunity to grow the convention and Visitors Bureau and to create more income for the county and put heads in beds, as they say. So I hopefully you guys understand that this is where we need to be.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions? Concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Griffin.
To be clear, I think the the train station is going to be renovated whether we occupy the building or not. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. That means they're they surely could find other tenants if they so choose, but it's not a guarantee. Without the tenants, their ability to reconstruct the building is limited.
But I mean, our 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 ability to occupy the building is in contingent on them refurbishing the building.
I I am not privy to that. You'd have to talk to Mr. Albert.
So they got R cap money for that, correct? I mean, they got the R cap money to renovate the building. Mr. Albert got the funds for that, for renovating the station. So he has the money to renovate the building whether we lease the property or not. So that so my my question is, is so what is the the hours of the convention Visitor Bureau that, you know, would make it worthwhile for people to be able to come there other than we're there, what, nine to four thirty now?
I, Bob, I can answer that.
Yeah, please, Ted.
You know, currently they're eight thirty to four thirty and, you know, and that there were times we put in place because of the pandemic. You know, obviously, once activity ramps up again, we'll we'll take a look at the hour. As far as the visitor's center, you know, being more accessible, especially maybe on the weekends, that's something we could look at doing what a lot of visitor centers do, and that is recruiting volunteers. But, you know, again, that's something that's a little bit down the road yet, but it is an option for us. It's something we have considered. And again, we'll take a look at it as as again, people start returning and and things get more active. Good question.
Yeah, and I I have I have some concerns about the eleven year lease. It's a five year lease with two options to renew for three. So that's is actually an eleven year lease, which is pretty extensive. I would, you know, I think a three year lease is sufficient. And then we can obviously go off for another another lease for a longer period. But I don't I don't think an eleven year lease is reasonable on a property that isn't even built yet. December fifteenth is his target date and he hasn't done anything to this structure yet. From all the years that that thing's been a white elephant for everybody concerned, from the redevelopment authority to the county commissioners to, you know, the county and and on and on and on, we see money, you know, I'm thankful that Mr. Albert took the place over. And I'm I'm thankful that he has the R cap money to refurbish it. I certainly think we should wait until it's actually refurbished before we even think about making an lease agreement. So we know what we're getting into in that particular structure. I don't believe that our ability to take that property as a lease agreement is going to make or break whether he refurbishes that building or not because he has the funds to do that. So he will, I mean, it's to his benefit, obviously, if we lock in a lease agreement because then he's guaranteed a tenant. That's I understand that. But I would like to see, I would like to see some activity there first before we even think about it because we've seen that happen before on the train station where the county taxpayers have been promised everything under the sun. By this building, we're going to do all these great and wonderful things. And here we are almost two decades later and the train station is in a state of disrepair and somebody else is developing it, wanting us to lease it from them. So I have some concerns about the the project. So. I do. I do think it's a great historical structure. I would like to see him restore it, absolutely. But I don't think we should be making a commitment to lease that until we see the commitment from Mr. Albert that he's actually going to restore.
Walter, you know, it's Bob Borick. You know that we have a lease now that's coming up for renewal in our present location that they're looking for an extension as well. So one way or the other, as long as there's a Visitors Bureau in the community, we're going unless we buy a property, we're going to have a lease that we have to adhere to. So what we're saying is the opportunity to be in a historic building at a focal point and not increasing our rent significantly and getting much more space isn't going to really change the situation, long lease, short lease or not. And it's not an eleven year lease. It's a five year lease with renewals. We have the opportunity to get out any anytime after five years. We've had the Visitors Bureau in its present location for well over ten years. I I I'm so strongly feel so strongly about this is an area where Luzerne County really has to create excitement. And we have the opportunity as a Visitors Bureau and Convention Center to bring more organizations into the community being visible. Like we have the Seventh Day Adventists, we have Keystone State Games. All these things are contingent on making the hotel rooms available and the quality of their stay to be really wonderful in terms of restaurants, hotel rooms, of ease of getting around amenities. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. And so I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity and I think would be short sighted especially since it's not costing the county any or taxpayer money to do so. But that's just my opinion.
Right.
Anybody else from council? Anybody else from council?
Yeah, Chris, I just want to say I am Sheila Sagan. I'm as excited as Bob and Ted. Your place right now is very difficult to see or to direct people to. I think there are a couple meters out front. That's it. And, you know, you can maybe stop on the square and, you know, for for a few minutes and run in if you had something significant. But I think that station has been just such an eyesore. And you're right, Walter. It's it's been difficult. I mean, I remember when, you know, it first was put up and it was an incredibly beautiful restaurant. And, you know, you want to get back to fixing that structure. beautiful restaurant and, you know, you want to get back to fixing that structure up like it should be. And, and really making it available as soon as you come into the town. And in many ways, that area is the place where they've developed that highway by coming into like where that gas station is near Jewel Core. And then you have the, the tourist, the, the center right there, the tourist center would be there, the visitor center. So I think it's a great place and can only do well for us. And it is, and Walter, I mean, yes, it's not an 11 year lease. You have two options on it. In a, you're making it sound really terrible by saying it's 11 year lease. It's not. It's a five year lease. So that's my feelings.
Thanks, Sheila. I like to say just one word, a couple of words, Bob and Ted. I, I think we're, we're looking for the wow factor and I think that, that's a place that, that can get us there, you know. And it, it would, it would do wonders if, if it comes out the, the way we hope for it does. And that's, that's a perfect place, perfect location. Just, just be wonderful for us. It's the wow factor. So hopefully we can get it going. Thank you. Anybody else from council? Okay.
Mr. Perry, real, real quick, let me finish my comment here on that station. I, I do believe it'd be a wow factor. I just have some concerns, not necessarily about the location. I think it would be a good location. I think the structure should be restored as a historical structure. And to, to Mr. Borick's point is we're going to pay lease payments anyway. Regardless of where we are, we're going to pay a lease payment. There's some concerns about, you know, the developer that's owned, had that property for quite some time and hasn't done anything with it yet. And I get that, that, you know, he's got, got a lot of things going on. But in the lease agreement, there's nothing that says that he'll, will actually be in there December 15th. And so my concern is we're already in March, almost into April. That gives them about seven months, eight months to get the building ready for occupancy, to get the convention visitor bureau in there. I think that's a really tight window. I'm concerned about will it materialize? And those, those type of things might be necessary to put in our agreement to say that if he doesn't get us in the building by December 15th, what penalty does he realize for not making that happen? Because we're obviously going to have to get out of our, our facility if we have a lease. We don't, I don't believe we have a lease agreement with the facility over where we're currently, we're month to month right now. So I just, I have some concerns about the developer and the timeframe. I certainly wish him well. I thought, I want to see that happen. I'd love to see us save that building because I think it is a beautiful building and it would be a great and wonderful thing for the county to have the visitor bureau. That's always been the plan. I mean, from, from way back when, it's always been the plan to move there. And, and I think it was great and wonderful to do that. So if I could get some assurance from the developer that that's actually going to happen, I probably wouldn't be so apprehensive.
I think your idea for getting something as a lease penalty if they aren't ready is a great idea, Walter.
Well, if I may, under the termination section, which is Roman numeral 12, sub paragraph four, it states that the lease is predicated upon the timely construction of the premises and lands detailed in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Let C has the right to terminate the lease if construction, if the construction of the premises is not completed by December 5th, 2021.
That should negate a lot of the fears. I, I feel strongly that it will happen. The structure itself is in bad shape internally. But externally, it's been, the engineers have gone through it and that's the hardest part of the reconstruction is if the external part of the building is so badly damaged. So the timeframe is workable. That's what George tells us. We can hold them to that, just like Ramelda just said, that if it's not ready for occupancy, there are alternative ways to, for us to recoup. I'm just excited about what like Chris said. I mean, we need to push this county forward and the more visibility we have and the more we can cheer for the great, wonderful things in Luzerne County. And that being a focal point can only be an asset. And I thank all of you people for your input and I've been involved with the Visitors Bureau for many years. And this is the most exciting thing that's happened since I've been involved. And I look forward to working with you all and getting this accomplished.
But if I could just follow up there, Mr. Borick, on the, on the fact that you're saying that, you know, and I appreciate the Office of Law's opinion about the, if it's not finished, we can obviously cancel the lease. But that doesn't, that does not satisfy the issue that if you've already notified the company that you're leasing from now, that you're leaving on December 15th and the building's not ready, then what, what, what kind of penalty financially will we gain for our relocation factors? That's, that was my question. I understand there was stuff in the lease agreement that says if the building's not done, then we're not obligated to maintain the lease. I get, I understand that, that, that's fine. But on December 15th, if it's not ready or anywhere close, we're going to have to make a decision where the convention visitor bureau is going to go. And what's that going to cost us to do that, number one? But most importantly was your statement about the fact that if we don't sign a lease agreement with him, he may not finish that building. I'm concerned about that statement is if that's an accurate statement or not, because he's, he's obviously, I, and I understand the financial impact, you know, he wants to make sure he has occupancy in order to make it profitable for him. That's for certain. But I don't want to be the linchpin as to whether he refurbishes the station or not based on the fact that we don't sign an agreement. So if that is, is that was conveyed to you by Mr. Albert that if we don't sign an agreement, he's not going to do the building or?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in. This is George Albert.
Oh, good. I'm glad you're on. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been on. Councilman Griffin, I appreciate your time and your comments. Just to address some of the points you made, you are correct. We did get RACB money for this project. You may not be aware of how the RACB program works because we need to borrow the money before the grant money gets applied to the project. So this renovation of this building is $1.4 million or equivalent to almost $350 a square foot. It's, it's a superlative cost and superlative renovation. There's absolutely no way that we're going to begin any work without knowing the destiny of the building. And quite frankly, if we don't have tenants, we prefer just to simply raise the building. But that wasn't our intention when we bought the property. We've worked with the county and visitor center for almost four years in developing this plan. This, the architectural work was done three years ago with the anticipation of, of the county taking the space. And we're still working with the county today. And in another comment, quite frankly, there's no profit to be made. The rent rate we're providing the county is a straight reimbursable cost. It's a very, very, very reasonable rate for the amount of money that's being invested into the property. On the second floor of this property, we're, we're working with a commercial realtor to take the office space upstairs. But the entire building is only 4,000 square feet. That's it. It's very, it's very condensed. And the, the cost to renovate this building is, is very substantial. So I could tell you this, we, we put this out for bid. It's been publicly advertised. We have a contractor lined up to do the work. We stood by our commitments on every project that we've been involved with. To finish on time and to complete within the budgets and constraints that are required. And we have a superlative track record in doing that. So I'm happy to meet with you anytime and go over the very, very great details of this project and we're, we're excited to get it done too. But there's nothing I could do with the building until I have a tenant and a lease signed.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Any, any questions from council? Any other questions? Thank you again, Mr. Albert, for answering our questions. Let's go down to number five, agenda items, council, county council. The controllers report, Michelle? Michelle, are you on? Michelle Bednar?
Yes, I'm here. Get the presentation on one second.
Sure, Michelle.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
This is. We're good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, county council members and county manager and citizens. Tonight I will be presenting the controller's 2020 annual report. As per our Home Rule Charter, this presentation will present an annual report to the people of Luzerne County at a council meeting. This report provides an overview of the activities and audits undertaken by the controller's office. The report details among other things that level of audit satisfactions and effectiveness and, and reported by those audited, a comprehensive breakdown of county functions. Will highlight the operations and finances of the controller's office for the prior year. The audits of the report detail each of the audits conducted and the purpose behind each audit. Identify audits completed, major findings, corrective actions taken by appropriate parties and significant issues not fully addressed and looking for potential improvements in county departments. The controller's office staff, our staff consists of four team members. We have Mark Magikas, who's our deputy controller, Wendy Sachs, senior auditor, Nancy DeFlory, auditor, Susan Josiak, she's internal auditor. Now the responsibilities of the controller. I knew I was going to do this. I'm sorry about this. Okay. Responsibilities of the controller. Our office is independent. We oversee county fiscal and management activities, monitor and examine county government and its operations. We have the authority to conduct fiscal performance, management, contract grant compliance and our related audits. The office of the controller performs an internal auditing function. Internal auditing is an independent appraisal function established within an organization to examine and evaluate the activities of the organization. A general statement of purpose, authority and responsibility for the office of the controller. Per 3.08 section of the Home Rule Charter, we have the authority to audit any county division, department, bureau, office, agency, authority, board, commission, elective office and judiciary, office of court administration and any other administrative unions. All, all county activities are subject to audit. According to the Home Rule Charter, we have the authority to audit any area that handles county funds, various factors that are weighed in to determine an audit plan. Generally, we select audits based upon a number of risk, risk factors. We look at things such as the time since your last audit, the size of the operation, system changes and a turnover of key staff. Classifications of audits. We classify our audits population into three categories. The class ones is a statutory audits. These types of audits are mandated by the state. Class two are discretionary audits, which are based on individual priority and staff time availability. Class three are high priority audits, are type of audits not known in advance. They require immediate attention, which takes priority over class one and class two. What we do, the main function of the controller's office in auditing and compliance is county, is county funds. We examine the effectiveness of internal control, assess compliance with statutory requirements, evaluate operating procedures, audit the accuracy and completeness of records and files pertaining to the receipt and dispersment of county funds. We do not oversee accounts payable. Under the Home Rule Charter, accounts payable was moved under the Division of Budget and Finance. Without accounts payable in the controller's office, we are unaware of payments that are approved and dispersed. What we look for when we do an audit, we look for fraud, human error, separation of duties, inefficiencies in operations, inadequate checks and balances, non-compliance and rules and regulations. The controller's office finances. As shown in this slide, the controller's office finished the year under budget. Our 2020 amended budget was 273,920. Expenditures were 262,375. We stayed under budget by 11,545. And our budget for 2021 is 273,551. Our staff of five employees, including the controller, continues to maintain adequate continuing professional educational credits. Even in the midst of the pandemic, we were able to complete some classes virtually with the controllers association. This helps maintain a network of resources to draw upon when faced with a new, new or challenging audit of situation. This keeps us abreast of new methods, helpful tactics and useful information in highly dynamic areas. Copies of the completed audit reports are posted online with few exceptions on the controller's section of the county website at www.luzerne county.org. By law, certain audits such as the DA Equable Sharing and the DA Asset Forfeiture audits are not a matter of public record. None of these audits are, none of these audits are office works with the, the US Department of Justice and, and the Attorney General for following their, we follow their guidelines. Per the Home Rule Charter, all audit reports must be posted on our website for at least 60 days. However, I chose to keep the copies of the completed audit reports posted online permanently and a copy posted on our office bulletin board. The audits that are completed in 2020, we have the real estate tax collection audit. 2018, this is the county portion of all tax payments the county received. Their findings, recommendations and actions taken. The tax administrator should continue to close out periods on a regular basis. The controller's office and the tax administrator, the tax processor should be notified anytime the RBA staff opens a batch for a tax collector. RBA is a software system the tax collectors use to post their payments. An inspection and update of internal controls is recommended so that unusual activity would be flagged to a report. Real estate tax collection audit for 2019. This is a county portion of all tax payments the county received. Great improvements have been observed over the past few years since the treasurer's office has consistently notified us of failed payments, regularly closed out periods of RBA and notified our office anytime RBA staff needs to open a batch for the tax collector. We have the Exeter Borough Tax Collection Audit for 2019. We found taxes were properly collected, accounted for, and remitted to the county. And we had the, then we had the 44 Borough Tax Collection Audit was, was for 2018. We also found taxes were properly collected, accounted for and remitted to the county. We recommended that the tax collector use a duplicate book, which has proven to be very helpful to others. The tax collector agreed and made this change. Schickshinney Borough Tax Collection Audit for 2016 and 2017. We found paid properties not reflected as paid in the duplicate book. We also found properties shown as unpaid on return reports, but shown on as paid in the duplicate book. An uncashed check was found. There were deposit slips that were missing. And we recommended monies remaining in the bank account be turned over to the taxing body. Then we had Selokam Township Tax Collection Audit for 2018. We found that March payments not entered into the RBA system until December, causing a delay in payment to the county of $29,996. If the tax collector would have been doing monthly bankrupt reconciliations, the excess funds in the account would have been detected. We also found that one bank account was used for all taxing districts, but there should be one account for county municipal and then another account for the school. We also found the tax collector did not appoint a deputy. And we also recommended using a duplicate book to record the payments. We have Pringle Borough Tax Collection Audit for 2018. We found that taxes were properly collected, accounted for, and remitted to Luzerne County. And we had the $5 vehicle registration fee audit for 2019. We recommend it using an interest bearing account. We recommend it engineering department focus on bridge projects in order to fully take advantage. advantage of the pin dots matching incentive. Then we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau Audit for 2017, 2018. We found staff must follow established personal policies with regard to gratuities and meals, or the policies must be amended. Action taken, the new director has been enforcing policies. We have the Prison Commensary Fund Audit for 2017. No findings with regard to inmate accounts. Inmate handbook revisions are needed in the area of the commensary purchase limits, telephone call guidelines, and work release payment hatchery. We found the restitution payments were below the regular amounts, but there was a noticeable improvement from the last audit. Prison Commensary Fund Audit for 2018. All discrepancies found were resolved, and a dendum was made to the inmate handbook to state $100 limit on regular commensary purchases. Restitution payments continue to be below required amounts, but steady progress has been made to rectify this matter. $314,987,000 was paid to the GTL, which is the Global Tel Link Corp. system, to resolve cash kiosk double payments. In February 2019, the prison stopped collecting the kiosk. This has totally been turned over to the GTL. They handle all the kiosk, kiosk collections, inmate deposits, bank deposits, and any problems that may occur with a deposit. For most part, the prison don't deal with cash and basically only deposits checks. The Info Quick Solutions Contract Review for 2019. The findings, the revenue splitting mechanism was slightly off by 65% to 35% versus $1 to 50 cents, resulting in the county being underpaid was $187.72. Actions taken, an amendment has been made to the contract to correct the error. Then we have the DA Asset Forfeiture Audit for 2019. This is filed with the Attorney General. No findings, this is mandatory annual audit. It is legally required to determine the accuracy of reported what was seized by the District Attorney's Office to comply with state law. And then we have the Northeast Revenue May 2020 Audit. This is verifying the total amount of property taxes collected and total amount that is delinquent, which is sent to Elite Revenue, also known as Northeast Revenue. The findings were payments are properly being made to the county biweekly. We found 28 incidences where tax collectors failed to forward money to the county, which resulted in properties erroneously showing as delinquent. This total was $6,961, and the amounts were properly forwarded to the county. And we have the magistrate 11-201 for 2017. There was no findings. When auditing magistrates, we verify the county shares. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, let me start over. Okay, there was no findings. When audit magistrates, we are verifying the county shares, share and cost of fines collected and remitted to verify escrow balance control and to verify monthly bank account reconciliations. Luzerne County operates with 16 magisterial district courts that deal primarily with low level offenses. We look at each court's fines and fees and money that is dispensed to verify accuracy of records and ensure that accounts are reconciled properly. Then we have the Dupont Borough Tax Collection Audit. We completed a compliance audit for 2019. We found the tax collector needs improvement on record keeping. Deposits need more detail on processing of payment to be done in a timely manner. And we also recommend, our recommendation in order to properly complete the year-end closing process, to use the December 31st date, needs to be reserved. We have the DA Equable Sharing Audit for 2020. This is filed with the US Department of Justice. No findings, mandatory annual audit. We verify the federal funds received or maintained during the fiscal year in order to maintain compliance. Then we have for audits completed in 2021, Prison Commensary Fund Audit 2019. Update telephone section of the handbook. Prison is currently making updates and digitizing the handbook. Then we have the continued attempts to meet with probation to improve timeliness of their notifications regarding needed restitution payments. Prison has been informed that effective as of April 2021, additional probation officers will be assigned. We also recommended OMS upgrade to implement automatic alerts regarding required restitution payments, but we learned this wasn't an option. Prison has already begun discussions in an effort to accomplish upgrades. And then this brings us to audits that are currently in process. Dupont Borough Tax Collection Audit for 2020. This is to verify payments and compliance. The West Piston Borough Tax Collection Audit for 2018. This is to verify payments and compliance. The Prison Commensary Fund Audit for 2020. To review inmate accounts, commensary purchases, inmate telephone services, work release program, and restitution paid. And we have the Real Estate Tax Collection Audit for 2020. To verify proper amounts were collected from the taxpayers and submitted to the county. And this brings us to the magistrate 11-103 for 2020. This is to verify compliance and proper collections and payments. Also for the magistrate of 11-201 for 2020, this is also to verify compliance and proper collections and payments. We have the County Fuel Review to verify compliance with procedures. And our 2021 proposed audits. We have DA Asset Forfeiture of 2020, is required annually. Probation Services Court Collections Division. Investigate payments of court ordered restitution to victims of crimes. Fender payments. We'll review policy procedures and internal controls. 2021, we have the Coroner's Office. Conduct compliance review in light of multiple staff changes. We have the Clean and Green Rollback Interest Certification to verify accuracy of certification with PA. Luzerne County Retirement System to review procedures and ensure adequate separation of duties. And we have the Sheriff Real Estate Sales to review department guidelines for payment and approval to tax collector vacancy audits. This is to review accuracy of tax collection for those tax collectors not seeking reelection. Then we have, so since some tax collectors are not seeking reelection, there will be newly elected tax collectors. And around 92% of the revenue received by the county comes from what is billed on tax collection. There are 76 municipalities in Luzerne County for whom taxes are collected. Our county treasurer's office collects taxes for four cities and one township. They collect the cities of Hazelton, Nanticoop, Pittston, and Wilkes-Barre, and Newport Township. Due to manpower constraints, we generally audit tax collectors only when there is a change in the tax collector. Examples would be the stepping down, or the death of a tax collector, or the election of a newly elected tax collector. We also audit if there's a concern regarding a specific tax collector. In addition to auditing tax collectors, we also audit tax collection in its entirety for each complete year. This will uncover if any totals paid to the county differ from those reported in the RBA system. This will direct us to any special tax collector audits that need to be performed. We are often asked if there is a class to teach the basic procedures for collecting taxes. According to the Pennsylvania Tax Collector's Manual, the main qualifications to become a tax collector are being a registered voter of the municipality, residing there for one year before election, and continuing to reside there during the term of office. It also states that noblekeeping or accounting skills are required. In the meantime, we put together and posted online a four-page informational piece explaining what is needed to become a tax collector to aid anyone considering running for the position. Our office has observed that many people have had difficulty in finding relevant information regarding this topic. This can be found on our county controller webpage at www.lazarencounty.org. Go to Government, then Controller, and then left-hand side, you will see a highlighted blue box. At the bottom of the box, click on the tax collector information, and you will take it to a list where you can find it listed as tax collector informational summary. It is to everyone's advantage to have an informed and qualified candidate for, to choose which one to choose. Our office for tax collection classes, our office is developing a training course for tax collectors. We had planned on starting training in 2020. However, due to the pandemic, we had to hold off on the start date. Since presently there is no uniform training for tax collectors to learn skills like using the RBA computer system, we believe developing a training course will benefit tax collectors, taxpayers, and the county. Classes will be offered free to newly elected tax collectors or to any tax collector who would like to take the class. The classes will be CD-approved for Continue Education credits. They're 50 minutes for one credit. One of our classes will focus on is the RBA eCollection System, which is what the tax collectors use for collecting the taxes. We'll cover the proper procedures for collecting taxes and emphasize the need for organization and bookkeeping skills. Other duties and responsibilities of the Controller. Ace Commission Board, Accountability Conduct and Ethics. Constable Advisory Board. Luzerne County Bid and RFP openings conducted by the Office of Purchasing. Review opening bids and monitor tabulation. Wilkes-Barre Scranton International Airport. Alternate with Lackawanna County for bid openings, and also attend monthly board meetings. When we come to our CECL hotline, a confidential telephone message and email system available to employees and the general public to report suspected fraud, waste, and abuse. This is citizens' employee suggestion and idea line. All submissions are kept confidential. As always, if anyone has anything to report and wants to keep it confidential, call or email our CECL hotline. This can be found on our Controller's County webpage. This concludes our 2020 annual report for this evening, mainly covering our audits we completed, audits that were currently in progress, and audits proposed, proposed audits, including information on the upcoming tax collection classes. At this time, if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Ms. Bednar from counsel? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Sure, Mr. Griffin.
Ms. Bednar, did you look at any of the tax, the taxes that were paid by citizens of the county regarding the ordinance that we passed last year to make sure that the tax collectors collected the right amount and didn't overcharge people last year?
Wait, could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. Last year, we passed ordinance 2020-5, which took the, which took the penalty period away from August the, well, June 18th to August 18th. And so people that were paying their taxes were actually paying face, not paying penalty. So I was wondering, did you take a look at any of those to make sure the tax collectors were collecting the right amount?
No, but that'll be coming up on our next one that we'll be doing for the 2020. So when they, matter of fact, I believe our one auditor here is working on something like that.
Okay. And did, did, did RBA make the change when counsel passed that ordinance back in April of 2018? Did RBA make the change to the, to the database that reflected that change so that you could run an accurate report through RBA to verify that the number that they collected was actually the number they should have collected?
That answer, I do not know at this time. I would, I'm not positive on it. I don't want to answer that because I'd be incorrect.
Yeah, I was just, I'm curious to know how, how we're going to reconcile the amount of monies collected and make sure that people aren't paying the penalty by mistake because some tax collectors, A, didn't know, or weren't informed, or whoever knows, whatever the scenario could be, that somebody was actually paying the penalty fee, and now, now the tax collectors ended up with a 10% extra on the taxes that were collected. So when you audit that, that ought to be an interesting thing. I mean, you would actually almost have to do a forensic audit, I would think, because if RBA didn't put it in their database, there's not going to be any way for you to know what the actual amount they should have collected as opposed to what they did collect. So I don't know how you're going to ascertain that number at this point.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just, I was just told that the RBA did make that change. So collectors didn't know about it. So that'll be, but we will look at that. That is, that's a very good point. Thanks.
Okay, all right. And then, and then when you were doing the audit of the tax collectors, you said there were some tax collectors in your report that didn't turn in their money at the end of the year through Northeast Revenue, so therefore there were people that were put in delinquent status. In audit, in your audit, did you notice whether they were charged a penalty because in ordinance 2017-26, their requirement is to turn over all monies within 10 days after they collect it? And are you checking to see that they actually turned their money over within 10 days and if they paid any penalties? Because I've asked that question and didn't get an answer yet.
Michelle, could I take that?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, this is, it's Wendy. She's from, she's my auditor.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah. The one that comes to mind for me is Schickshinney, although when I was doing that audit, I reached out to Northeast Revenue, and they ran a special report that told me which tax collectors paid Northeast Revenue. So if a tax collector were to process things properly, Northeast Revenue would not end up with these, these properties that are shown as delinquent that were really paid. So in, in doing all of that, I spoke with the managing partner at Northeast Revenue, and he went to his IT team and had them create a brand-new report that would tell us every time a tax collector pays Northeast Revenue. So in other words, if a tax collector makes an error, allows somebody to show up on a delinquent list when they have already paid their taxes, Northeast Revenue is now going to alert us to that. And I actually just emailed Sean, I think, two days ago, or yesterday, and he's, he's going to rerun that report for 2020. We went all the way back to 2016. So what was your question again? I think I only.
Well, that's, that's helpful. That's helpful information, Wendy, that you relayed. My question was, tax collectors each month are supposed to turn over their revenues that they collected for the taxes by the 10th of the month.
Right.
And I understand, I understand there were some tax collectors, either due to COVID or whatever happened, that were not able to turn over their taxes by the 10th of the month. And I was curious to know if you are getting any idea of what that penalty is that we're charging them, because according to the ordinance, we're supposed to charge them a penalty fee. So are you looking into that when you do the audits?
Well, we will be. I think right now, we have one audit, one tax collector audit going for 2020. So, so your question just, it's. So, so your question just said. Pad printer. But we will look into the penalties.
I'm sorry, Wendy. This was, this was adopted in 2017. So we, whenever you do a tax collector audit, I'm wondering if you're using the ordinance as the council passed when you do the audits to make sure that they're in compliance with the ordinances of council? And one of the ordinances is exactly that?
You mean just regular penalties, not the ones specific to 2020? Oh, yes, yes. Our main tax collector auditor, she's very thorough with that. That's me answering.
So since 2017, there was nobody that had a penalty for not turning in their taxes by the 10th of the month?
I'm sorry, I only heard part of your question.
I'm sorry. So since 2017, when that ordinance was passed, that said that they have to turn their money in by the 10th of the month, was there any tax collectors that you audited that had to pay a penalty?
Not to my knowledge.
Excuse me? Can I answer that? I was just told that there is no penalties that have been charged. Everyone generally pays on time. And then sometimes a processor will keep up with the payments and then it takes a day or two before, before the pass of the 10th. But they're, they've been, they've been coming in pretty well, that they don't have to, they haven't had any charges to anyone.
But I'm, my question is, are you looking at that? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, in, in, I, I understand there were people that didn't make their payment on time. And, and they didn't get, either they didn't get a penalty, I don't know. But, but in any case, that, that was my question on that, is if, when you're auditing, are you looking at that kind of stuff? And my, my other question is, have you verified the bank accounts don't have their personal names on them?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, yes.
Okay, okay. So that, that is something you're looking at. Good, very good. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Wendy. I'm sorry.
I was just saying, we also verified that they have a deputy.
Well, that's, that's not, that's not required though, right?
No, it's not required until your, the ordinance was passed. But that was, that is something that we do look at because we had the one tax collector when he passed away. It's helpful to have one.
Right, right. And that's why we did that ordinance to make them have a deputy tax collector. So, yeah, so, all right. So the, and the last question, how many calls did you get in CECL in 2020 and 2019?
I don't know about 2020, well, just past year, maybe about 10, I would say, maybe that, maybe if not.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much. I appreciate your, I appreciate your input. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else in council have questions for Ms. Bednar? Michelle, thanks for your report. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Number six, discussion regarding resolution on convenience fee. Mr. Griffith, you want to take care of that?
Walter. Walter, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chris. Thank you. Yeah, I, I do, I do believe that what, what my intention here was that when people pay taxes to our county treasurer's office, property taxes I'm talking about, they pay a convenience fee of, I believe it's 3%. And that's a third, I believe that's a third party, and I know Mr. Pedri is going to chime in here and try and help along on what, what that process is. But it's, I believe it's a 3% fee that the third party is charging us to process a credit card. My idea is, you know, based on the fact that, you know, it's already hard enough for people the way it is for now, that we could take this convenient fee away, just, I mean, obviously, the tax collectors aren't using credit cards. They're cash or check. But the county's got the three cities plus the one township that pays their taxes through the county. And if we could help the citizens by taking away that credit card fee, that would be helpful. I know that at some point along the way, I remember when Mr. Lawton was in, he tried to get a, an RFP with the banks that they would do that all for no charge to us. But I don't know how, how we could remedy that situation. But I think that would be very helpful if we could eliminate that convenience fee. I don't know, it's getting to be a point where most everybody pays now with a credit card. And for us to tack on an additional 3% to somebody that's paying maybe $2,000 a year in property tax, I think that's, you know, that's just an added burden for some people to pay. So if we could eliminate that in some way without too much impact on, you know, based on the fact that we have some extra money that's, you know, we can possibly add to that, that might be helpful for the people for this year. That might be a good way to help them pay their taxes quicker if they're not paying a fee. You know, sending in a check might be cumbersome for them. It's way easier for them to just pick up the phone and call in a credit card. So if I could get some feedback on that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Griffith, I have some information, but I didn't want to cut you off. It's Brian.
Thanks, thanks, Brian.
Sure, no problem. So currently, as of this morning, the credit or debit card fee is 2.5%. That is not charged by the county. That's charged by Evolution, our third party. So it's not a county imposed fee. I understand the taxpayer pays it, but just want to clarify that it is a fee, but it's not a county fee. It's a third-party fee. If you were to pay by e-check, it's $1.50 regardless of the amount. Again, I understand it's a fee. I guess the questions that I would have before we got to voting would be, one, you know, we'd have to come up with a budgeted amount. And we would, you know, you could come up with one, or we can work with you on that. Two would be, while the tax collectors wouldn't do it, what's to prohibit somebody that wants points or something to use a credit card and then get the fee waived to get points? And I guess the third one is, you know, we would need a line item. Currently, as you spoke about the RFP for banking, when we did the RFP for banking, then did it again, and we're currently with PNC, the idea was basically to come out to fee-free banking. So you pay for, you're getting earnings credits for balances you keep with the bank. You're getting charged for any kind of fees, and the idea is that you basically net zero. We had an RFP for credit cards. My team is actively, actively working on that. I think it was done probably many months ago, something like 10 or more. But we repicked up the ball and are trying to get that going, reaching out. We're working on that with Joan Holgard's team. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. It's just from an administrative point of, you know, anyone who paid by fee is going to want a refund. We need a GL line to, to give people, to actually charge. And if a taxpayer or a group of taxpayers gets the refund, and we can't use the $114 million stimulus, we're basically just swapping vendors. So now, you know, Joe taxpayer isn't paying the fee, but all county taxpayers are paying the fee. So that's kind of what I would need in the next two weeks. And I'd be happy to work with you on it.
Well, you know, quite honestly, you know, from, from me being in the business of my own, is I don't understand why we just don't do it ourselves. Why don't we just do credit card processing right there in the treasurer's office? If somebody calls up, we have the terminal right there. We do it ourselves. There's no fee to anybody. We just, whatever the fee is, and I'm sure we could probably get a visa fee of probably maybe 0.9%, maybe. And, and I don't know what PNC Bank would charge us on their side to, to process it. But I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to do our own processing right there. In the, why do we have Revolution do the processing for us? Why don't we just have our own terminal?
I think to that point, you know, I agree that we could have, not have a third party. But as you know, with different scams going on and calls, you know, credit and debit card, that comes on us then. So if you're not a third party and there's unauthorized use of a card, whether that be a physical card, a ghost card, or it's, or it's called in, we don't want to put the county in any kind of liability that a card was compromised. That's one of the reasons we use the third party. So I understand the point of the fee. I would like to get the fee down. I understand the point of, hey, if we can have no or low fee, that would be great. But administratively, there's a couple of things that I'd need answered to get that done. And again, I, I, I don't need all the answers tonight, but just, we need some of those things and we'd have to figure them out. And also, you know, if you're going to run a terminal, do we have the, the lines to run it? I, you know, I understand we just put some new computers and things in the treasurer's office and did some updates during the COVID. Do we have spots for terminals? So it sounds great. And again, I'm not knocking the idea, but it's not something that we can just implement without some of these things being worked out.
And, yeah, and I, I certainly understand that. I, and I hear somebody else wants to get in, so I'll step out for a moment.
Yeah, it's just Linda. You know, I have a question about, do you have an idea of the percentage of people whose taxes are actually paid through escrow to Luzerne County rather than paying them directly in person or, you know, themselves? Do you have an idea of, of that percentage?
I think it's around a quarter, give or take. It might be a little more than less. I know we put it together. We were talking about changing to in-house. So it's not 2%. Whether it's exactly 25 or 30, I don't know the exact percentage, but I would think a quarter would be a good estimate.
Right, but those are paid to whoever collects it. So they're paid to the tax collectors, right? So that would not all be stuff that would be paid directly to the county?
Correct. So I guess that's another potential issue, is that I'm all for helping, but you're helping five municipalities. This would have no impact on someone with a tax collector.
Right, so do you, and, and that, I guess, is the question then. The breakdown is, of the people who pay directly to the county, how many people pay themselves as opposed to having it paid by their escrow account? And I don't know that you have that level of breakdown right at hand, but, you know, I think that's a, that's a question that needs to be answered too. How many people would it actually impact? Because I, tax collectors are not going to take credit cards. So it's only going to impact people that are paying taxes directly to the county, right?
Correct, correct. It would only accept the county and the municipalities the county collects for. So your majority of individual tax collectors would not have the service. Just like any third party, it's on them if they want to provide it or not. We can't mandate it. Or we can't mandate it retroactively.
And what's the volume that the county collects compared to the overall total?
For the, even though it's only five of the municipalities, I believe it's somewhere around 20%. And again, I'm getting this from the submittal from a few weeks ago. I might not be the exact penny. So I think it is about 20%.
Okay, if you could, you know, do a breakdown of how many of those people pay directly out of that 20%? I, I would like to know the percentage of taxes that are paid directly to the county right now and the percentage of those taxes that are paid by the person themselves or by the owner themselves instead of through an escrow account. All right?
Yeah, we, we could certainly do that. And I think, not to stifle this conversation, the next one, Ramil and I had some conversations. And as council was well aware, last year, these changes were made based on the state. That year being a Senate bill, I believe it was 851 being passed. So while there's some bills in Harrisburg still out there, I don't think any have passed. And I've, you know, through my listserv and CCAP and our other contract groups that we get, I haven't had anyone talk about making these changes. It doesn't mean they won't, or they won't in the future, but they did last year. And I think in the absence of something being done at Harrisburg, we, us moving it, we'd be the first one. So didn't want to hijack today on this or the second one, you know, moving the percentage. Not 100% sure we could do either unless there's some, some movement in Harrisburg. But we'd obviously let you know before you voted. Tonight was just a work session.
Thank you.
Right, and I'll, I'll follow up on that. There is a Senate bill out there. There have been amendments to the original bill. But the bill does not address the percentage, the penalty, the percentage. I did send a query out to the solicitor listserv whether other counties were changing the percentage. And I got two responses from Schuylkill and Potter, and those two counties are not. But there still is this Senate bill out there that's pending. And the latest is that there were some amendments made, but other than that, there's no other information that I have to offer as to that.
Quick question, Mr. Chair. Go, Mr. Hawes.
Yeah, how many, Mr. Switz, do you know how many, how many people have paid online so far this year?
I know right now that as of this morning, 166 people paid by either credit or debit card and paid the 2.5% and 284 people paid by the e-check. So just doing a quick math, and I might be off one, but about 450 people, give or take, has used the third-party service today.
Okay, so is that on target then for, for years past? What do we usually see, like, at the end of the day, end of the tax season? How many people pay online? What are we looking at?
I think that's still kind of to be determined. Again, being that this was work session, I, I know that to Ms. Hou's point, roughly 33,000 of the 157,000 bills are the cities. So that's about 21%. I was off a little bit. But I don't have the totals of what we collected the last few years. I can get that. And like I said, I, I'd like to get all the information flushed out before council moves on this, one way or another. So that was really my point of, you know, giving information to Mr. Griffith and all of council.
Yeah, I mean, this is just such a big issue, all, all these issues. I wish we would have this very discussion weeks ago. Because again, I think the majority of council made an error. And you can see it with, with this report and with the Controller's report, how much extra work it takes to go through this archaic process. And here we are again, wasting money all over the place. So this, I think any way we can save the taxpayer money, I'm all about. Got to make sure we do it equitably though and fairly. And, you know, it's not going to cost us some extra expense as well. Thanks, Mr. Switz.
Mr. Perry?
Sure, Walter.
And, and I, I don't expect to bring, bring this resolution, obviously, to a vote at the next meeting. I, I certainly wanted to have a discussion, and I don't see any reason why we, I mean, I understand your security issues, Mr. Sweat and I, Sweats, and I understand all the things that have to go with getting a phone line and all that. But every, quite, quite honestly, I mean, anybody who's alive today buys stuff through Amazon. Anybody who's alive today pays their vehicles repaired with a credit card. Anybody who's alive today pays everything with a credit card, and it helps their cash flow problems. I mean, people that want to pay their taxes would probably pay them quicker because they could use a credit card without paying a fee. Some people won't pay them with a credit card because there is a fee. I think we should, we should work diligently about putting in a terminal in the, in the treasurer's office and, and work to do it in-house and save the, the money that goes to Revolution for processing as a third-party processor. And then we won't have to charge the taxpayers anything for paying with a credit card. We'll just absorb that as cost, and you could do the breakdown and say, okay, we do a thousand credit cards at 1% each, and the total comes out to that, and you budget that as an expense, and, and we can move on from there. But I think we really need to work at getting this credit card and convenience fee. I call it nonsense because quite honestly, nobody else is doing it except government. And I think it's, it's, it's a system where we're actually charging the people twice. We're charging them for the employee to sit there and collect their taxes, and then we're charging them a fee for paying their taxes to that very employee. And, and to me, I just think that's just unfair. I think it's double, double and triple charging people. And I know that's not, you know, that's just the way things are, but we should work to try and fix that if we can. I, I would like to see us do it as a resolution of council and get it done and move it forward. But I know there's a lot of moving parts that have to be fixed first before we could just drop it on the table for a vote. And I'd be more than happy to work with, with yourself and anybody else that we can get a number so council feels comfortable with saying, okay, you know, it's going to cost the county, you know, $3,000 in fees this year to waive that process. Can we absorb that cost? That's, that's something we need to look at. I get it. So I think we should work at it though. I think we should just try and move forward. This is 10 years now in home roll. I think it's time to give back something to the people if we can.
Thanks, Walter. Not against trying to do something, just think there's a lot of logistics, and that's all I wanted to bring up. And, you know, if we, I know you had April on your meeting. I know that could be amended. And I also know it doesn't have to be voted on on the 13th. So just wanted to let you know what our concerns were and let you know that we did. So just wanted to let you know what our concerns were, uh, and, and let you know that we did, you know, we obviously read your, read, read the agenda submittal and wanted to respond and have meaningful discussion.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Brian. Brian, if you could.
This is Leanne. I just want to say something really quick with the, with the credit card because we accept them at, at my business. And each credit card does charge a different amount. So it's not, it's not just as simple as saying, okay, we're going to accept a credit card and it's a flat fee. It's, it's a different amount for Visa, a different amount for, uh, Mastercard. Um, and okay, that could be budgeted, but that does cost, you know, my business, it costs me money to accept credit cards. So I don't know. You know, with Mr. Sweats, I'm sure you, you know all about that too, but it does cost money to do that.
Yeah, I think as I said before, and, and again, we're not trying to just, uh, you know, dismiss the idea and there's, there's obviously valid points to it. But it's not just something as we put in a terminal, we get a provider, uh, we'd have to do an RFP. Uh, I, I talked to the Office of Law, but nobody looked at what Evolution's current terms are. I don't know if it's a at will, if we need to give them 30 days, 60 days. So, you know, we have to obviously come up with a line. It may be something that is five or $10,000. Is that getting added to the budget? Is it coming to from reserve? You're helping five municipalities while the other seventy-some don't have a chance. Uh, so just some things we wanted to bring up. Uh, again, i- if all of those questions are answered, uh, council's vote is the vote, but we're trying to get everything upfront and work through all the, all the points.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian?
Yeah. Oh, I have a question for Bri- Brian. Brian, um, you know, I don't know what it is, but we have a lot of money with PNC Bank. What if we, what if we worked with them, not putting the terminal in our place or whatever, but and the, the, um, credit through them, you know, the taxes through them and, uh, could get them not to charge fee at all because of the amount of business we do with them?
It's not a bad idea. Uh, we can obviously bring it up with them. I have to realize that everyone is in a different place via COVID. Uh, it's, it's still with us as we know at this remote meeting, but it's definitely a discussion we can have and we do have quite a few accounts and millions of dollars with PNC currently.
Yeah. And, you know, if you're telling them, you know, you're shopping, we, we'd like to have this done for the taxpayer. We'd like to have this, uh, not necessarily added on to our treasurer's office, but they have the ability to do it and do it well. And, you know, I think you could possibly cut a good deal with them.
Thanks, Sheila. Anything else from anybody? So Brian, we thank you for your, for your input and we just added some more work for you to do, but we appreciate it.
Maybe like model, I need to start selling positions.
We just keep piling on you, Brian. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Walter, for your input and thanks, Sheila, too. Let's go down to number, uh, seven. Discussion regarding a resolution to reduce the 10, the 10% fee for Luzerne County 2021 real estate property taxes. Uh, Walter, you want to address that, please? Walter, you're muted?
Yeah, he is. Up there.
There you go. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Walter.
Yeah. And I just, I just want to say that, you know, last, last week, we, we had the resolution from Councilman Vog to do the change on, based on what happened with the, the government, uh, the state government last year. And it was, it was a good idea. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for the state as, uh, the Office of Law just enumerated to that we're waiting for the Office of, uh, of the state to decide what they're going to do with their Senate bill to continue with that program. My, my issue is in the tax collection law. We can actually reduce the fee from 10% to whatever fee we want. The law just requires us to have three periods of tax collection, which means we have to have rebate, we have to have face, we have to have penalty. So we can set the penalty up to 10%. It doesn't mean we can't reduce it to 1%. And we can easily do that. And we could be a trendsetter in all 67 counties of Pennsylvania by doing that. I just think, and, and as, as everybody can glean from my issue with the credit card fees and now this, is I just think it's highly unfair for us to do to taxpayers what we do and we've done for decades, where we charge a 10% fee, uh, and, and we all get hit with this in our daily lives on our credit cards. And, you know, if you don't make your payment by a certain day, they tack on another $39. And if you don't do this by a certain time, we tack on another percent. All of these things that everybody gets their hand in our pockets for on a day-to-day basis in our own personal lives as well as, you know, as members of council. So I thought that what we could do is we could actually lower the fee for those folks who are struggling to make their tax payments from 10% to 1% and we could do it legally according to the statute. And that would make it easier for people that are having a problem. And, you know, I get the fact that you're going to have some people that are always going to game the system. There's no doubt about that, but you're going to have, you have some people out there that just struggle day-to-day to pay their taxes and to tack on an extra 10% because they can't make it by the fourth month of the period when the taxes are issued. I think is unfair. I think if, as long, the penalty, if you don't pay your taxes, quite frankly, is you're going to lose your house. So I don't, I, I think for us to tack on another 10% and then it goes into delinquency and then they get their share and Northeast Revenue gets their share. And by the time you're all done, the poor guy who by no fault of his own has now can't pay his taxes, has now can't never pay his taxes because now everybody's got an extra fee that they've tacked on and made it even harder for the guy. So I think this is an opportunity for us as council to say, we understand you're having a problem. Let's reduce it from 10% to 1%. And if the state legislature comes by and allows us to extend the penalty or extend the discount period and, and we want to do that, we can certainly do that. But I think to charge people 10% at this time when people don't have funds to pay their taxes, I think is unfair. I think if we could just reduce it to 1% and make it easier, it's an easy situation for math. You just move the decimal point and everybody's happy and they can pay their taxes and we don't have to, you know, put an added burden on people that have to pay their taxes. So I was just thinking of a way that we can get something that Councilman Vog put in and something to tack on to it to make it work. And I understand we have to wait for the state legislature, um, Councilman Vog's issue, but I think this might be a way that we can do something in the, in the meantime. Cause I doubt the Senate probably will pass the bill. They may, but who knows what they'll do in state government. So that might be a way for us to help the people.
I'll speak at the end. If other council members want to talk, Mr. Chair. I, I do want to, just like the other one, but I'll, if any other council members want to speak, they can go first.
I have a question for you, Brian. If we were to do that, okay, do, I mean, I don't want to see us get into a position where we're losing significant revenue would end up having raised taxes the next time around. Is what, what do we make on penalties? Or what is the actual amount of money, uh, derived as revenue from penalties?
So I, I think to your question, and this was brought up last year. We did, we don't specifically budget penalty, but we budget the 92% for the current year collection. So I guess in theory you could say we're budgeting 8% for penalty. Uh, we know some people are never going to pay. Some people will pay late. Uh, our, our three things with this are just number one, uh, June 16th to the end of the year is a long timeline. So if, if you're going to change and lower that, that's great. But unlike last year where there was a move, and I do agree that that would have to be, uh, you know, my understanding, not Office of Law, but that that would have to be a movement out of Harrisburg to move the date. Uh, that's a long timeframe to give somebody from June 16th till December. Uh, then to the controller's point in her report and Mr. Griffith brought it up, that money is not turned over or required to be turned over if they don't hit their bonding limit until January 10th. So in theory, if the, if the fee was low enough, uh, you could have somebody hold on to their money for six months. Again, not against helping people, but would help, would hurt Luzerne County cash flow. Uh, the second thing would be based on the numbers from last year and the last few years. It's probably looking at, you know, somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of 1.4 million we talked about from 10% to zero. So if we're knocked that down to 1%, you're probably talking close to a million dollars. Uh, I understand we have money in reserve. I understand council can move that money. But to your point, you know, just what is that? One, 1,050,000 is one mill of taxes. Uh, just to put that in perspective. And the last thing, which is the easiest is I think we should put days and not dates because five municipalities bills didn't go out on February 16th. They went out the 25th. So if we're going to extend something or change something, uh, you know, we should have so many days encompassed, not, uh, not hard date. So those are the three things. I think one and two are the, are, are more concerning from the finance side. Again, I'm not against helping people, uh, just, just some of our concerns upfront and you know, maybe there's some middle ground, maybe there isn't. I just wanted to kind of lay out our financial concerns. But I do understand there are people hurting, uh, whatever percentage that may be. It, it obviously isn't zero and it's not a hundred percent. So helping people is great, but to the extent that we either raise taxes, don't make revenue or do something else, uh, that's council's decision. We'll give you all the information and an administration recommendation, uh, for your vote.
Thanks, Brian. Any, any questions to Brian from anybody from council? Hey, I'm going to thank council for, uh, doing a good job with the, uh, discussion on a work session. That's exactly what a work session is supposed to be. So I appreciate everybody and everybody's input, uh, to looking at these, uh, respective agenda items that may end up on the, uh, voting session down the line. Again, thanks, council for that. Let's go to number eight. Reports of council committees. Act 13, Grant Committee. Matt?
Yes, sir. Nothing new to update.
Authorities, boards and commissions. We had met. I believe it was, uh, March 9th, we did our interviews, um, and we also were tasked with a few months ago, uh, with sending the ABC letters out to the respective, uh, uh, ABC people and, uh, and the questions that, that came along with it. And we finally got just about everything, uh, addressed and everything answered. Yesterday, Attorney Vito, uh, DeLuca and Attorney Crocambe, we had a nice discussion about this. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mr. DeLuca to address a little bit about the ABC questions sent out to the ABC people.
Uh, you're talking specifically about the, the questions about the ethics issues and, and, uh, yeah, um, well, we had the conversation about it. Obviously, uh, it came up, uh, most recent, well, most recently about, uh, one of, uh, the other boards, um, about, um, uh, receiving some sort of tuition reimbursement. Uh, we've had recently also the, uh, the LCTA issue, um, that, uh, that we had to take a look at. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about, especially when it came to the LCTA issue, because we, uh, once the Office of Law took a look at it, received the information from, uh, some of the information from the officials from, uh, the LCTA. Uh, certainly, uh, we realized that, uh, what they were doing may not have been illegal. Was it something? It certainly was not illegal, I should say, but, uh, was it something that, that was, uh, contemplated by county council? Uh, maybe not. Um, our suggestion back then was that, uh, the ABC committee kind of take a, a good look at, uh, all the situations, uh, in the, um, in the ABCs, request information from them. Uh, and then try to determine, uh, if we have to do anything with regard to some of our, uh, whether it's the administrative code or the, uh, or the ethics code. You know, the, the charter itself has some, uh, some language in it that, uh, you know, we have, uh, at the Office of Law struggled with as far as what the true intention was. I could only imagine when you have members of, of the public citizens who you appoint to, uh, various ABCs, uh, who are expected to, uh, kind of get through, uh, that same language. Um, I was just taking a look at the charter today and, and, uh, uh, again, saw the, the provisions regarding, uh, ABC appointees receiving, uh, benefits. And although one section of the charter indicates that they shall receive no benefits, uh, the section that talks about, uh, the, um, uh, the Ethics Commission, uh, indicates that the, uh, ethics code should not be construed to limit uh, an appointee's ability to collect benefits that, that any other, uh, similarly situated, um, appointee receives. So I think one of the things that, that we've been talking about at the Office of Law was that, um, you know, over the past nine years, we've done, uh, and council has done, um, many things, the county manager, uh, the permanent, uh, Office of Law, uh, solicitors. Uh, now it's probably time to sit down and really work out some, uh, some of the, uh, details on the things that haven't worked so perfectly, uh, and also try to tighten up some of our codes. We're receiving right now, uh, we requested some additional information pursuant to Councilman, uh, Griffith's, uh, uh, bringing to, to our attention regarding a, uh, uh, a benefit. Uh, we, we requested information on it. The, uh, that board is providing us with the information. Their solicitor is, uh, is cooperative. Again, we're, uh, hopeful that the, uh, that the ABC Commission, uh, together with the Office of Law could, uh, uh, come up with some recommendations, uh, and a report basically for council as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Anybody have any questions?
Um, Mr. Perry, if I could?
Sure.
Um, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. DeLuca for that report. I appreciate that. I did get notified from, uh, one of the board members from LCTA that they did at their board meeting today vote to stop providing that. So, and, and kudos to them. And I don't think there was, as, as Mr. DeLuca said, I don't think they did anything nefarious or illegal in any way. Uh, and I appreciate their ability to honor our charter, even though they don't have to. I mean, according to the authorities' law that they want to provide that to their members, they can. And so for them to take that step forward, I think is a good step. And I think they recognize the ability of home role to, um, you know, and the structure of our government. So I appreciate them taking that step, uh, regarding LCCC. Uh, you know, and, and the information's forthcoming. I think to Mr. DeLuca's point, I think we need to take a look at how do we actually, uh, proceed with issues of this magnitude? Whether it be the Board of Elections, whether it be the LCCC Board, what, whatever board? And how do we actually legally remove a, a person from a board and, and for whatever reason, we want to remove them? I think that's something that we really need to look at, uh, as this charter's progressed over the past nine years. Because I don't think declaring, and I said this before, I really don't believe that if just by declaring the seat vacant makes it so. I think we actually do have to remove somebody to make that seat vacant. So I, 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 I mean, I, I don't think that it's, it's appropriate for them to be given tuition waivers to people and their dependents. And I'm hopeful that at some point that practice will stop just like LCTA. But I do, I do echo, uh, Mr. DeLuca's sentiments about, you know, we really need to sit back and take a look at some of the things that have happened over the years and try and fix them either through administrative code or ethics code or whatever way we need to do as time moves forward. So thank you for the, uh, uh, report. I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, real quick, uh, just kind of, uh, jumping off of what, uh, Mr. Griffith had said. You know, in the beginning, I
You know, in the beginning, I think, uh, and I was, uh, I was the temporary chief solicitor, uh, back in 2012, uh, while, uh, they were looking for a permanent chief solicitor. And I really think, I mean, uh, the transition, uh, team, the, uh, county council, the, uh, county manager at the time, myself, uh, the county controller, we sort of had a responsibility to look at all these, um, all of these ABCs and, and really confirm that the ABCs were, were in compliance as we define it. Because, um, you know, the public, uh, you know, subjecting these people who, uh, who you all vetted and who, uh, you realize are, are people that are just looking to do public service, uh, and to, to publicly shame them, uh, as may, obviously not intended, but as, as they're viewing it, um, because they're taking some sort of benefit that, uh, was, uh, legally provided to them, uh, it, it's, that's not the, the right approach. And again, I've, I've said this, if I said it once, I'm going to say it a dozen times. The election board situation was much different. This is a situation where there is no clearly defined answer. These are questions of ethics. Uh, these are questions of, of, uh, interpretation of the charter. When I'm looking at our own charter and in two separate sections, one that says that you could be appointed to an ABC and you can't receive any benefit. And then I'm looking at the ethics code section of the charter and it's saying that you can receive a benefit as long as everyone else who's similarly situated is also receiving it. Um, you could understand how people who've been appointed to those, uh, ABCs may also, uh, misunderstand it. So I really think, you know, we have, we all have some, a little bit of work to do over the past nine years. A lot of, uh, uh, been able to, obviously mostly all of you all have been able to solve a lot of problems. Uh, this is just, uh, uh, you know, this is something that we have to spend a little bit of time on. Uh, and none of this rises to the level of being, of someone being dismissed from a board.
Yes, Linda.
If I could just chime in here for a second, uh, cause Vito's right. He talks about, you know, the work that we did in 2012 to look at all of this. And I was the one who was doing the work on the ABCs at that time. And the very first thing we did was send, um, all, put them, uh, give them all notice that they needed to look at their bylaws and make sure they were charter compliant and send us copies of their bylaws. So, um, and, and that's fine. Uh, and a lot of them did that. Um, I, we did actually have to approve some of those bylaws changes over the course of a couple of years to make sure, uh, you know, when they revised them to make them charter compliant. Uh, the issue I think with LCC is that this was not maybe a bylaw. This was a policy, um, on the tuition waiver and it was revised in 2013. So, you know, it's not like there was nobody who looked at it after 2012. Someone looked at it in 2013 and it didn't raise any flags for someone. But I think now that it has raised a flag, uh, I think it's, uh, I don't think that that is, is something that should continue. Um, I think that's, that's clear. You could talk about interpretation of a lot of things, but that's a financial benefit.
Mr. Perry?
Sure, Sheila.
I just, uh, as a former board member of LCCC, I would like to find out how many people take advantage of that benefit or have taken advantage of that benefit. I didn't even know it was a benefit. Um, I don't think anyone ever told me, take a course, you don't have to pay for it. Uh, so I really, I would really like to find out how many there take advantage of that, either for themselves or for their dependents or it, it, I, I would be surprised if it's a, a, any kind of significant number.
Sheila, if you look at your, uh, chance, look at your questions that were answered by LCC, there is a list there for you of who has.
I didn't look at them, I forget.
Yeah, it, it's, it's there, you know, it's there.
Okay.
Uh, again, if, if we're, we're, we're getting into practice here of publicly shaming these people when it's section 903 of the charter. I'll read you the last, uh, section of 903 of the charter. And this is relate, this is under the article nine, accountability, conduct and ethics. And it says, "This section of the charter shall not be construed to prohibit employees of the county, members and employees of county authorities, boards and commissions, elective county officials and employees of their offices and employees at a judiciary and office of the court administration from accepting group discounts, group insurance or other economic advantages offered to all these individuals." So this is what our charter says and, and I completely understand. And I, I, it's not my job to determine what policy is. That certainly is your job, but this is what the charter says. And, and I respect, uh, a position that would be taking by, taken by council that we don't want to appoint people who would take, uh, any sort of economic advantage and that's fine. But the reality is our charter has permitted it and it, it does permit it. So.
Sure. Vito, but, but the thing with LCC is that it's a community college. It's the only community college and we do have a financial, um, support. We, we have financial support of the community college to a certain extent. Um, there is a difference between an employee and a board member. Um, and the board members who are appointed, um, understand that they're serving, um, the county, they're serving the county on that board. They are not employees of the, of the community college. And, you know, the Municipal Authorities Act may regulate some other things that are available to other, um, board members, uh, across, you know, in other municipal authorities. The community college is a different thing. It's not an authority. So, um, I, I think that some of these things, uh, actually a lot of these things should be addressed in the administrative code. I think that that's, those are things that we need to flush out in that code and council can take a, and a, a position and clarify them. That is the point of the administrative code. That's what we're supposed to be doing in that.
Let me just say one question, term, something about the LCC. I believe they just found this information out and I'm sure they're going to meet and I, I'm, I'm convinced they're going to take a positive action on this. That's just, that's my take on it. Anybody else have any?
Thank you.
Questions, concerns? Sheila, go ahead.
But.
Did, did you, I thought you, I thought you asked for one of the top.
No, 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 I didn't.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move down to, uh, C, Budget and Finance Audit. Uh, Mr. McGinley's not here, so we'll skip down to Legislative. Mr. Hawes?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, again, I thank you council members for supporting the I-80 tolling resolution and many, many thanks to Chairman Lawrence, our clerk, who, um, really, uh, ran with that, got the word out to the stakeholders there. I just sent out, uh, actually just this morning to all the CCAP membership. You, you might've received that in your box if you checked it to their listserv. So we'll mobilize other, uh, counties as well. And, um, that's off to report. Thanks again for the support on that one. Think it's important.
Thank you, Herr. Real Estate? Yeah?
Yes, uh, we have a meeting next Tuesday, March 30th at 2 o'clock. We're going to be dealing with the procedure, um, for the new purchase, uh, a new purchase procedure for the purchase of county property. And we do have some new properties, um, well, current county properties that people are interested in purchasing, so we'll have those on the agenda as well.
Thank you. Strategic Initiatives?
Uh, nothing on strategic initiatives, but, um, uh, code review. Um, we had a meeting scheduled for this Thursday and we're going to have to postpone that. Um, so we will postpone that until, um, it, the, um, I think it's April 7th. Two weeks from Thursday, um, will be the next code review. And we are just about done with the divisions section, so we hope to bring that to council at a meeting in April. Um, we're going to amend it in pieces. So, um, well, we're trying to get section six, uh, together to bring to council, uh, because that deals with the organization of the divisions and the organizational chart. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, anything about the Election Inquiry Committee?
Uh, no, we, uh, we, uh, completed our initial, uh, inquiry and, uh, we had asked Mr. McGinley to keep us, um, on paper active until after the, uh, primary election. And then we thought we would get together after the primary election to just take another look at everything.
Wonderful. Uh, number nine, reports of council-related committees, blight of property. Mr. Hawes?
Yeah, nothing to report there, Mr. Chair, but, um, seriously, when, when, uh, Mr. Jones was there earlier, I hope council can really sign on and just, um, do their diligence, really research these blight issues, talk to members out in the community. And I really think that needs to be part of that comprehensive plan. Um, we, our Blight Property Committee can only do so much and after COVID really threw us for a loop, so we have not been active for a year and, um, on my, my way out too in just a few months. So if anybody is remotely interested in that, I'm looking to pass the torch in the near future. So, um, think on that one, pray on that one and, um, really do some research on the, on the blight. I think it would really help out our, our community. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Herr. County Chairs, Mr. Vogel?
Yes, uh, we are meeting Thursday at 6:00 PM.
LCTA Colts Committee. Mrs. McDermott?
Yes, uh, we had a meeting last week, March 16th. And, uh, the discussion, uh, we're waiting right now for lack of one county to get back to us to see if they even want to proceed. They said they were going to get back to us in one week, which was today, but I did not hear anything from them.
Okay. Let's go down to Public Comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Revo speaking.
Mark, good to hear from you.
Thanks. Uh, kind of have a little bit of double vision because I saw one chairman that looked like you in Hazleton and another one looks like, you know? So I kind of called one by the other name and it kind of, you know, threw me for a loop for a second, but I, I managed, I managed. So, uh, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I would.
My brother is, he's a little younger. Good answer, good answer.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with, uh, Councilwoman Halk and, uh, Solicitor DeLuca on the, um, the ABCs as far as, uh, you know, because when somebody applies, like I guess yours truly did back, you know, on the first tour of duty on the redevelopment authority, a lot of people don't seem to, uh, you know, it's kind of like walking into the middle of a forest and you're not, you don't have a compass or a map, uh, to navigate. So, um, I, I agree with Solicitor DeLuca that, you know, you kind of got to give, you know, a lot of latitude for these, uh, the, the nominees or the persons that were appointed, excuse me, to the ABCs to allow them, you know, time to get acclimated. And, uh, that's what needs to occur. And we said this during, if, uh, Councilwoman Halk remembers and the other, uh, council members that were on the, I believe the Charter Review Committee at the time, uh, you know, the, we, we, we discussed about the, uh, need for the, uh, appoint, appointees to get a copy of the, uh, relevant, uh, laws and charter to be able to, uh, navigate, you know, through the, through the woods, so to speak, you know, of their different ABCs. So I think, I hope that, uh, that can continue and also, you know, maybe council can look at, you know, furthering, um, you know, helping the, uh, appointments, appointees to these ABCs to better navigate, uh, even through, like say their first year even, uh, of their, of their board tenure. Because it's really, it's, it's really trying, Mr. Chairman, to get acclimated. If I didn't go to these state meetings, like, you know, I would have never known so half of the things I know about, uh, the redevelopment authority, for example, going to, to get assessment of these, uh, different laws that are passed. So, uh, many of these appointees don't have that luxury. And I think, uh, we need to, you know, do a better job, uh, to allow for them to get, uh, better acclimated. Also, I can completely concur with Councilman Hawes on the blight, uh, plan that needs to be included because it is crucial, Mr. Chairman, very crucial in terms of the growth in our, in development in our county, uh, moving forward into the future. I cannot stress enough that blight costs us money. I believe in, in the old, in the, uh, the draft copy that was submitted to you for the joint, uh, comprehensive plan, it costs 1.8 million dollars to the county. So I would just keep that in mind, Mr. Chairman and members of council, that that needs to be taken care of. Uh, that is all I have. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Revo.
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I have six things that I've, that I've written down that I, I would like to have an answer for. Uh, I asked a question before, I got no response. Question that I asked before and public comment. On the ABC committees, from what I understand, that they swear on an oath that if there's something wrong with, in their, in their ABC committees, that they have to report at the council. Okay, that's the first question. The second question is Mr. Jones and, and the 21 municipalities that they have set up are talking about growth. The thing that's going to stifle the growth is the fees, the potholes, the warehouses and, and the condition of the county. The third question is the person that is going to take over that, uh, uh, train station, well, he, he's, he's just slapping you guys in the face and saying, well, no lease? He's not going to do the job. So that has to be addressed. I mean, it's, it's an important thing. Yes, it's a nice thing to have that there. But then where, if you, if you tell the, uh, uh, the other committee for the, and they relinquish their lease, where are you going to put them? Where are you going to put them? In the courthouse? You have to have a place from the, the Visitors Bureau. All right? Now, the fourth question that I have is, uh, Ms. Bednar said that they could audit authorities. Well, the Controller's Office could audit authorities, correct? That's what I heard her say. So why can't they audit the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? Okay? That's the question. And the 10%, I guess, Mr. Braggadocious Perry, or, uh, not Perry, Pedry is bragging about so much money that the county has. I, I think it, it would be a good idea to lower that penalty of 1%. I mean, how many times are you going to put the, their, Pedry's knee on the neck of the taxpayers in Luzerne County? And the sixth question is help the taxpayers by cutting down the amount of the budget. I mean, there was a lot of items put in and I listened to every, every item that was put in the budget and, and everybody said, oh, we don't, we need more money for the budget. We need more money. Everything that Walter brought up, everybody cut it down. They said, oh no, we need more money. Oh, we know, we need more money. So why don't they just cut down on, on spending and that way they would be able to help the taxpayers? And that's my sixth and final question. Thank you very much, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Perry, Jason Carr.
Sure, Jason, go ahead.
Uh, there's three very talented people on council, uh, Linda, Harry and Walter. I, uh, let this be one of your lasting legacies to help the taxpayers. Uh, please support Walter's, uh, propositions to lower taxes and accept credit cards and maybe the three of you can work closely with, uh, Mr. Swetz and Mr. Pedry to accomplish this before, uh, you leave council. Uh, I find it interesting that, um, Mr. Albert was, gave an ultimatum today to, to council. Uh, it's a shame, it's very arrogant. Uh, I've met him a couple of times, uh, so it, I've always had that feeling about him and, uh, he proved that tonight. Uh, it's shameful that, that building sits there. He actually purchased it for 1.2 million dollars. Uh, he's claiming that the renovations are 1.4 million and he was actually given a grant of $1 million, a grant, not a loan, a grant of $1 million. So for a $1.6 million. So, for a $1.6 million investment, he's crying about a $2,800 a month lease. Uh, it's really despicable that he even threatens to raise the building of such historic importance to the city, uh, while it sits there as of today, if everyone wants to drive by it, filled with garbage that we have to look at every day as citizens of, of Wilkes-Barre. Now, I understand that it's very hard, it's extremely difficult to attract, uh, renters or businesses to the city of Wilkes-Barre. More people have died on Public Square in Wilkes-Barre than have on Times Square in New York City so far this year. That's the truth. Uh, and interestingly, uh, well, Pedry's boy, Mr. Wample, he's actually leaving the city. His house is up for sale right now. So, uh, not only can, both myself and Mr. Albert, we rely on the government, uh, for rental payments. Uh, he with the state police, and it looks like now it's going to be Luzerne County. I guarantee this council will approve that lease. I, it, it's a given. We, we know, the public knows that this is, uh, a big scam, and this, this has been talked about now in Wilkes-Barre for the last year that this is going to happen. So it's already a given. But again, the taxpayers are on the hook. And the taxpayers already took a $4 million or $5 million loss when they sold it to him, because they purchased it from Mr. Greco for $6 million and sold it to Mr. Albert for 1.2. So maybe LeAnn McDermott, uh, on the Real Estate Committee can help Mr. Albert find a private uh, investor to possibly locate the building. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be amazing? But it's almost impossible, because most people don't want to invest in Luzerne County or the city of Wilkes-Barre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Anybody else? In the public, anybody else? Any public comment? Anybody else? Motion to adjourn. Some of, Mr. Chair? Second, Harry Haas.
Second, Urban.
Good job, good job, Mr. Perry. Good job running the meeting.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any oppositions, any oppositions? Motion carries. Adjourn. Thank you for your help. Thanks, thanks for everything.
Great job, Chris. Have a good night, Chris.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody. Have a good night, everybody.